Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, May 27, 2023, and the Beller Beach City Council Work Session will now come to board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. So would you please follow up? Councilmember Frank Banker?
Here.
Councilmember Belinda Livingston?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Motaro?
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joey Shirley?
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler?
I am here.
City Attorney Randy Moore?
Present.
Thank you, City Manager Rico. All right, let's just get right into it. We have a, it looks like a small agenda, but it's actually kind of big. So let's just go ahead and get started with item number one, which is to review the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Review Recommendation for Planning and zoning Board. This is placed on the agenda by City Attorney Randy Moore. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. So the city has been working on its comprehensive plan amendments as part of its regular cycle for doing so. Let's zoom out a little bit, beginning by explaining what the comprehensive plan is. I know we've touched on this in the past, but your comprehensive plan is like your constitution and your land development regulations, your ordinances on land development are like the laws and statutes that flow from it. You cannot build in a community in a manner that is inconsistent with a comprehensive plan, subject to some things Tallahassee has done of late. And so that's a, that's, that is to say, a comprehensive plan is a critical document. It is your visioning document. It's what bounds the development and aesthetics and all the other elements of your community in a broader way. A comprehensive plan ordinarily has to be revisited and revised every seven years. We are on that interval. And so playing a slight bit of catch-up, but getting it done, I've been meeting with myself, Kyle, Patty, and Linda Fisher from Ford Pinellas have met with the Planning and Zoning Board on at least three different occasions to discuss, revisit, and revise this. And what you have before you is the draft that Ford Pinellas has produced based on recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Boards, and housekeeping that had to be done, as well as some updates that are mandated by the legislature of language that you must have in your comprehensive plan. The Cliff Notes version of that is some of the housekeeping amendments were updating data and analysis for the community, such as your population figures, projections, updating the maps, such as the future land use map and boundaries, updating your schedule of capital improvements to reflect your current priorities, established priorities, updating some other definitions and terminology. Some of the more substantive amendments that you'll find in there in terms of the amount of strike-throughs and underlines attendant to them really have to do with bringing this comprehensive plan draft into conformity with three specific Florida statutes. The first being the Peril of Flood Act from 2015, which requires local governments to address topics such as repetitive flood damage and sea level rise. The Burt-J. Harris Private Property, well, within the Burt-Harris Act, the Private Property Rights Act in 2021, sort of attendant to that, the legislature thought it important that communities memorialize in their comprehensive plans a series of property rights that exist, but just sort of, I guess, an ethos or mission statement. So this new element is added in this draft. Another is, there is a bit of a hat tip to an act adopted this year, the Live Local Act, otherwise being colloquially referred to as the Affordable Housing Act that passed this session. One of the things in there is says that affordable housing can be built in certain manners, notwithstanding any local ordinance, regulation, or resolution, or other rule. And so we at least acknowledge that, the existence of that act in the comp plan. There are other attendant restrictions on what affordable housing is and isn't, and what kind of property it can be developed on, and you don't have that in your community at present. So not a huge concern, but just at least acknowledging that language. There were some things that were discussed in the, that Planning and Zoning, there was one topic that Planning and Zoning discussed, and on my advice and otherwise declined to raise, which was the acknowledgement of or provision for motel hotel-type structures within the, within the community, or uses, I should say, more than structures. And there was a concern on, depending on how far down you go, that road, do you erode your transient lodging, short-term rental restrictions? And so that was abandoned based on a concern of that, so that did not make the draft. Some of the proposed amendments that they did address was recognition of the importance of the Beller Beach Marina. Your Planning and Zoning, I'm calling it your Planning and Zoning, it's, they're wearing the hat of the Land Planning Agency, if you're, if you're tracking the statutes that way. But recognizing the importance of the Beller Beach Marina with new policies proposed to state that the city desires to keep the Marina as a Marina and prioritize its use for residents as feasible. When you're talking about a comprehensive plan, the kind of language you draft is aspirational typically, especially when you're talking about objectives and goals, you're not talking in, in the same way that you would a land development regulation like, "And the skate park shall close at 7:00." It's, you know, "The skate park shall be open in reasonable hours to administer daytime enjoyment," would be, that'd be sort of the difference. You don't create those hard fast things. So concerns regarding traffic passing through the city, that was really the lion's share of the discussion in the LPA, is how do we control, or how can we best manage that? The reality's being Gulf Boulevard is not the city's roadway, and there, and you sit between other communities, there are limits to what can be done and what can be exacted from those adjacent communities or their businesses. And then they addressed a few minor issues, including newer revised policies regarding mandatory protection and regulation of e-bikes, exploring new funding. Again, they didn't outright regulate those things, but those were some of the topics they touched on. So if you have the document before you in full, this is a workshop, this is not the first hearing on this, we, there is a draft ordinance attendant to this process, and you will see that. But before we prepared an ordinance for this body to consider on first reading, we wanted to make sure you'd seen the output of that body. And also, just by way of further education while you continue to peruse those documents, the comprehensive plan adoption process is a little different than your average ordinance. Usually, we have a first reading, second reading, we're done. There's a little bit of a flow chart up and down, where we do a first reading, we send it to Ford Pinellas, they say, "Yeah, we're good," and then it goes on to Tallahassee. Tallahassee's Division of Economic Opportunity kind of gives it their own blessing and says, "Okay, you can move to your second step." So if you see, if you see this, understand that there's, there's a little more bureaucracy involved in this particular kind of amendment, because it is a big deal, it is your comprehensive plan. But I'm, just while you looked at it, I wanted to make sure you're also aware of some of that process. So that's what you have before you tonight, the workshop. The ask from staff is whether individually or collectively you had any concerns in the draft that had been circulated to you in advance of the meeting, anything that you were wondering, "Why is it this way, or how can we address it?" I can't profess, I will tell you, I did not draft this document specifically, this has been prepared. This is a planner's mind, a planner's view. I've certainly looked at it and reviewed it, but if there are things that are, that are a little more nuanced, I may say, you know, we can, we can look to that and have, get that follow-up from staff on that from the Ford Pinellas side. But again, just looking for if there were any concerns, questions, comments in the draft as it presently exists. Anything I missed there, Kyle?
Not at all.
All right.
I have a question concerning the power of Ford Pinellas. How much authority do they have with this?
I would flip the paradigm of the question. It's not an authority, we are self-governing, as much as Tallahassee allows us to be anymore. But this is, this is a collaborative process, they've been our partner through this process. We have an interlocal agreement with Ford Pinellas, wherein this and other measures, they provide planning services to us. We don't have a separately contracted planner. And so this was not their, this was not by decree from them, that this is what you must do, this was the input of your board. The Ford Pinellas inputs in this process were largely just the Florida statute, statutory compliance and conformity. They are the metropolitan planning organization, and there's certainly some things we have to do that have to align with that. But as it relates to this particular draft, I'm not aware of any, you know, edicts that they decreed shall be adopted by the city, and sorry, that's just the way Ford Pinellas says it goes. That wasn't really how this drafting process worked, to my knowledge.
Okay. Counsel. Mr. Banker?
I guess it's a question for both of yous. You've read over the document.
Mr. Banker, can you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sure you've both read over the document a few times. What is in there that we can't live with? Question here. Have you been able to, are we able to adjust to this, or, you know, comply? It looks like you've complied with everything already.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anything of the stuff that was mandated to be in there. You know, it was just the wording that they required, and then kind of things that the Planning and Zoning Board talked about were just, in their minds, what the city needed to focus on. I didn't, there was nothing I checked out that was a major issue.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I think, again, the, perhaps I need to do a better job of articulating, this is your policy document, this is a planning document, this is yours.
No, I understand.
And, and when I say that is, there's not some external decree, I don't think there's anything in here that you can't live with. I think a lot of it is consistent with what you're already doing, as you sort of alluded to. Part of what I would say, this is more, rather than an imposition, this is more an opportunity. And, and that's not just lawyer spin. This is an opportunity to say, "Hey, if there's something on the horizon that we feel we need to address here and say, 'This is the direction we want to take this community from a land planning perspective, this is a great time to do it.'" But I don't think, with the exception of things you just can't change, like putting in, regardless of how you feel about them, putting in nine rules about private property rights, you might not feel like we need them in there, we got to do it anyways, but it doesn't change anything we're doing or not doing, because it's just the law. It's how property rights work in America. So in this, in this particular case, to answer your question, I don't think there's anything you can't live with, and that's in part because I don't think there's a law that's being imposed. I think the hardest thing, if I had to answer your question with anything, I think it's the limits of a community and a county that are as densely populated and interrelated as you are here. Because a lot of the frustration that the Planning and Zoning and LPA came across, and like, "I really want to say this." It's like, "Well, we can't quite do that, because we can't dictate what happens in Clearwater Beach and the bridges." So, you know, we can't say, "And the bridge shall, another bridge shall be built, you know, from here to Siesta Key," or something like that. It may be what we want, that's one, not how this kind of document functions, but also the limits of what we do.
Yeah, and then, and the reason I said, because you said, you know, we may have a couple of work sessions on this, but it's, might be useless, I mean...
Oh, I wasn't suggesting work sessions, this might be the only one. If you, if you guys don't really have a lot of feedback, I just, the first reading and second reading.
I just didn't see anything that we could live with, or what we're not doing already.
Yes, sir, that was the question. No, I appreciate it.
Do we have other comments from the council? Questions?
I just want to be clear that any, any changes or modifications are highlighted on here, and we can quickly skim through it, so that everyone's, you know, aware that we're not reviewing this entire, this document, this entire, and we can see the changes.
Yes, they are in strike-through and underline format. In fact, I think you can call it out in another color beyond just strike-through and underline. So it is made so that you can skim and see if something jumps out at you, and that's all we're, we're asking, certainly not making the ask that you go, unless you desire to as a body, go page by page. You certainly enjoy that discretion, but in a broader sense, I will tell you, I know this kind of is well-known in this community, but I give my hats off to your subordinate boards, they really spent a lot of time with this document, they did go page by page like three times, on, on three separate occasions, and revisiting that. So they did a lot of the heavy lifting, which I think is part of why it seems, may seem easier now. But again, as you folks are the ultimate legislative body or governing body here, it's, you know, again, just making sure that whatever, where they were tracking is where you wish to go.
Okay, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at objective one dot seven. So this is all in light blue, does that mean this is all brand-new, if it exists?
That seems correct to me, I don't know if some of it, I'm seeing some things that are bold, so I'm not sure if those moved, but yes, that looks like new text. Which page out of the 44 are you on, just because the objectives get renumbered again as you move sections?
This is page number 23.
23, thank you.
One, two, three, four, and four, eight. This is the peril section.
Yeah, this is, and so by way of example, this is one of those statutory inputs that we have to put into the flood peril statute, and that's why where you see things that are not just one isolated section on a page, more likely than not, you're dealing with regulatory mandates there. And so that is a mandate that we, we don't have a lot of flexibility with.
And did you see any red flags in this edition?
Me? I did not. One thing I was particularly careful to review, and I would certainly review again before we get to any kind of first and second reading, is making sure there's nothing that could be construed so as to touch on your transient rental or short-term rental regulation languages as some kind of interpreted receding from that. I know that is not the policy direction of this body at this stage, so I will look at that again, but I looked at it a few times. I did not see anything that could be construed in that, in fact, the language was specifically massaged or addressed, you know, in that way, to, to make sure that was not on, not at issue. Otherwise, I, no, I did not see any red flags. And I think, you know, to my point answering your first question, Mayor, staff with Ford Pinellas was very responsive to comments and concerns on, from the LPA, and a few instances, there was language in there that either wasn't really doing too much, or like, "I don't love that it says this, do we have to do this?" "No, you don't have to do that, and if you don't, if it doesn't align with your community, even though it was in your comp plan last time around, take it out if you really want." And so that was, you know, those kind of recommendations were heeded.
Well, for instance, objective one dot 11. "She shall participate and encourage other local developments to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, community rating system, blah, blah, blah." So now we're lobbyists for state board.
And again, I'll have to, in the meantime, I will pull up the Peril of Flood Act to see if that language is directly from the statute, I believe it is.
What page is that?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
I actually got stuck on the term "to achieve flood insurance premium discounts." I think we're receiving discounts these days.
You want to start me?
Yeah, I mean, she's right into it.
Yeah, I mean, Kyle does a lot of work with the, to make sure we have, we get.
Maximum.
We just got our research for class six, which is 20% discount. Now, it's tough to see on everybody's policy, the terms that are there. And if we didn't participate in the program, we would see the difference.
That's some strong language.
Yeah, shells.
"Shall influence other municipal bodies nearby."
Especially when you see every municipality around us is receiving the same document.
Again, I can, I can, that's one topic we can certainly follow up with and see what portion of that language is statutory mandate, how much of that is language trying to capture the essence of a statutory mandate? If it, if it's the latter, then that will give us some flexibility. But for example, with the private property rights language, which is not what we're discussing, it is a script, it says, "Put these words in your comp plan." I don't, I'm not as intimately familiar as, with the flood peril act to know if that's the case. Ms. Fisher, who will be here for the first reading, she was just, it was just a timing issue for the workshop tonight. Ford Pinellas does plan to attend the actual ordinance hearings to facilitate this process, but between now and then, I can get that information from her. I'm doing Google searches now, but I don't want to hinder you moving through your agenda tonight, subject to my ability to find it on the fly.
That's, that's fine. I just, just want to make sure that these shells are actually what they, what they have to. "Shall" means you have to. And that's a little troubling right there, because what's the next message we're going to get, or the next remaining? So that's my comment on that one.
There's actually Senator Scott, who's the mayor's, proposing a bill this week to offset the National Flood Insurance Program and bring in more private insurers, which I think is going to make it even worse, because it's going to be like a citizens' wall. So it may conflict with federal policy, that bill.
Other comments, questions? The council on this?
I think, just talking about that 1.11, so Kyle, is there anything in there that we're not currently doing? I think we are doing all those things, I don't think there's really an issue regarding the fact that we're saying we shall do it, because I think it's important for the city to do those things.
Oh, there was, there was, "For the city to influence other communities around us."
But then it doesn't say "shall," it says "encourage."
"Shall encourage."
I think naturally I do encourage the program and the CRS, but I understand the strength of the language.
I also understand that sometimes Tallahassee doesn't get it right the first time.
You can carry that throughout the document, I know there's plenty of areas where it says that we shall coordinate with Pinellas, Pinellas County, and for Pinellas, for planning, to ensure, planning for pedestrian bicycle paths and bicycle friendly design standards on future, future roadways and private, so, I mean, we have that on, on Boulevard, but does that then require us to provide to the city?
But that's, that's not ours road, it's a county or anything, so, yeah.
We talk about paths on 20th Street.
What does that mean, tell me?
Well, I, I will tell you as a visioning statement, no, it doesn't compel you to ensure there's a bike lane on every road and artery in your community. It compels you to collaborate, and we can collaborate and determine, it's not feasible, it's not necessary, it's not, but at least be open to that general sense. And I, you'll see a lot of those shells, but those, without, outside of the 1.11, which I understand you're concerned with, and we can see if that's mandatory language, but in a planning document like this, there was some discussion, for example, during the LPA meeting about, it says, "We shall provide for transportation facilities." And we're not going to be building, we're not part of PSTA, we're not looking to be building bus shelters, and it's, but transportation facility is your roadways, your sidewalks, your walking paths, your bike paths. You guys spend a lot of time talking about pedestrian paths over the last year, and so you're doing that. And it, it's not always the most narrow construct of what the, what that terminology is. And so no one's ever looked at a comp plan and says, "You have to build these things." It's more, it's more what it doesn't provide for that becomes the bigger issue for you as a community.
And, and to add to that, we are cooperating and communicating with Pinellas County, because we're asking questions and trying to reach some solutions to help with the draft.
And understand, your participation in the Big C, your participation in the mayor's council, your efforts with Ford Pinellas, otherwise on their board, and looking at the tourist development tax involvement, and all those things, that counts. That's all part of that collaboration. The fact that you've reached different conclusions doesn't mean you failed to cooperate. You folks are very involved in your communities, but in your community at large, and your neighboring jurisdictions, and trying to find collaborative solutions. I think you check more of those boxes than you might realize or give yourselves credit for, because it doesn't necessarily mean that you cede your autonomy to them, it just means you're willing to see if we can work together to a better tomorrow, or, you know, whatever tackline you wish to put on.
Anything else, counsel?
No.
So we'll commit to follow-up on the objective that you provided.
What's the next move, to bring us into ordinance, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, and that ordinance is prepared, it was in draft, subject to your input. So the one thing that we, Kyle and I will follow up with Ms. Fisher and her team at Ford Pinellas, to see what, what flexibility we have with that language, and what an alternative language might look like if we can do that. And then we would bring the draft to you as promptly as practical, subject to notice provisions. When you're admitting the comp plan, there's enhanced notice requirements and advertising requirements, so that would be, that's the only thing that's going to limit our, how quickly you see it next.
I didn't see really any other showstopps, I just sounded weird, maybe telling us what to say.
Yeah.
So take away our opinions, and I don't see much side of us, that's a little troublesome, but for the most part, everything else looks like housekeeping. And you're going to check into that language?
Yes, sir.
And then make the recommendation for the next council member?
As, as soon as advertising and other legal requirements will allow for it, yes, sir.
And just so everyone knows, I will not be here at the next council meeting, Vice Mayor Shirley will be chairing it.
So Randy, on, just for example, take 2.2, which comp takes 30.
Thank you.
So they started with, in the new language, "The city shall identify and describe joint processes." And I'm, I'm sort of familiar with the shells and will, the city must, and all that kind of stuff, you know better than I do. So right underneath that, 2.2.1, it says, "The city will coordinate with," which they could have taken, yeah, to me to say "shall," but we didn't, so there's some inconsistencies there. What do you think is the best adverb, or the best verb there? Is it "shall," is it "will," are those similar?
I, I think that they, that the "will" language is, is more optimal for what the community's trying to do. You're making a, you're making a commitment to try versus you shall, you shall have this result. I don't know that there's a lot to be gained from editing the document to make every "shall" a "will," or "will" a "shall." I, I think the net effect is likely fairly similar. You see, it looks like the way this is drafted, if you look at it throughout, the objectives typically carry the shells, and the policies that implement them carry the wills. And so it's, it's more of a, as a policy, we're going to, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're trying, what we're planning to do, it's not by way of mandate, it's a direction we intend to move.
Okay, that makes sense.
And, and these wills, we did this anyway, so it's already done.
But that does make sense, with policies, use the will and the objective, "Shall," I get that, thank you.
Any other comments before we move on?
I just have the schedule of capital improvements, I know it's kind of vague, and I'm going to have Tony, who's had some more specific, it's been a bad decision, because we wanted to hold to those standards. But I guess just if we can get some back, because this is, you know, it's off the top of my head, and we're talking about all of our communication, it doesn't necessarily, you know, that's south of light, north of light, what are we, you know, what is the work we're proposing with everything here? Is that the total project, you know, that sort of thing? I know with storm water, we agreed to, we're forward with all of the projects, or the bond issuance, and I guess I just want to be sure that that's reflected here.
So this is something I brought up in the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, you can see the red where we crossed out, and it was a...
Yeah, I get that, this is my...
So the, so is everything over $100,000 in budget, and I updated it based on what has occurred this year, this reflects also the drafted budget. So I can, I can get with Linda Fisher about adding some, some detail. I think this is just kind of like the layout that's required for this plan, and we just moved the numbers based on what's happened.
Well, and I'm not so concerned about necessarily adding detail, I just want to know what I'm working here, what I'm applying into. Like, in other words, if you say, you know, you can tell us that this is, what the $3 million is for in 2023, is where we stop on light, you know, 2 million is for in north of light, or whatever, I just want to know what we're improving.
Right, correct me if I'm wrong, but this isn't, the resolutions and decisions that were approved during our council meetings are governing decisions, right? This is just reflecting...
It's a current state of affairs, yeah, it's a reporting element of it, it's not, it's, it's supplement to your comp plan, but it's not a policy, it's not an objective, you're not bound to it that same way, it's reflecting presently, at time of adoption, this is where, those are, those can be the screw-in. I hear you're brought up concerns, I just wanted, I want to know the backing, I was just answering his question.
In the back, in the background, previously, the comp plan included storms, a stormwater plan that, that required you to spend $500,000 or something ridiculous, when in fact, our number was 5 million. So there was a big discrepancy, and as an outsider, if you look at the comp plan, it's like, "Oh, they're not doing anything about it," you know, which has, if you're not from this area, you might review this comp plan and think that, and that's what I kind of want, these numbers to be somewhat accurate of what we have planned.
And that, and that's actually one of the, one of the reasons that schedule was removed in whole in its previous iteration, and was this, is that's one thing, even between our last LPA meeting about two and a half weeks ago, and today, Kyle was working to get that aligned more currently with where fiscal figures are at present. So that work is being done, has been done, I believe, and that's, but I hear you're wanting to see sort of the backing for it, that's something we can do, you know, offline and otherwise, but that, that effort has been made to make sure it aligns with the realities on the ground.
And in this document, this is $10,000, but basically, are...
Yeah, it don't necessarily went to the white page 35.
Absolutely not, the less grain you look, the better we are. I understand where you're coming from, probably not a bad idea, just to show us the man, how you came up with this, and, which I know it's all out there, it's probably, it's probably a simplified version, it's just a piece together, here's where these numbers mean that, or equal that. Somebody could, if you would help us. Any other questions or comments? Nope, all right, going once. All right, we are on to item number two. This is review, 2019 strategic plan placed on the agenda by State Manager Reaver. Mr. Reaver?
Okay, I placed this agenda item based on the last work session we brought up, that we had, and you do the strategic plan in some time, and I looked back through our records and found that the last meeting that was really discussing the strategic plan was on July 12th. And that was when Vice Mayor Gunn, at the time, did a presentation. And I took, I actually reached out to Vice Mayor Gunn, previous Vice Mayor Gunn, and got his last presentation, his materials, when we left off at. So I wanted to include that in the packet so you all could see, you know, what his thoughts and vision was for the strategic plan. And if you go through the last presentation, it, kind of, this has been covered as, since the, the origin of the strategic plan, it talks about assumptions made in the city. It talks about the SWAT analysis, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that relate to Bell Beach. And then it goes, and at the time, it was 2018, the council kind of set aside five specific goals for the city that will help the city reach its mission and overall vision. And those goals are public safety and health, tax dollar value, communication and community, aesthetics and beach and water. It doesn't have page numbers, but about halfway through, this page is the last layout of the existing goals with the objectives that were assigned to them, and it says the 22. I went through that and took that document and kind of cleared off some of the goals that we've tackled this year. It kind of opened up to new objectives, which was the last page, where we need some new objectives to get us to these goals. And the, the main stress, stressed idea when, when Vice Mayor Gunn gave this presentation was that it needed to be thought about and included in the budget process. So with that being said, I just want to say, some of the, just the ones that I checked off the list, we had the, well, the emergency generator funding, we decided to postpone that, or not, not pursue it at this moment. We had the city manager selection that's been done, the AV remote, or the audio video remote access that has been done and upgraded. The playground decision, playground has been installed, walking easement, we surveyed the residents on that, got the feedback, and the buoy decision, we drafted, read the ordinance, and created the new bathing areas. So that leaves us with the address and mitigate street flooding issues, which I believe that were still underway. Revisit economic impacts, the CIP and reserve funds. We did a lot of that, and we talked about the bond issue, but I think that's ongoing process. This one, I wasn't aware of, but the Gulf Boulevard traffic monitoring, the crosswalk, A12 Street, it's ironic, because we were discussing the intersection, and specifically, we were talking about that crosswalk, which I know some of the ideas surrounding that crosswalk and what the county's doing with the study could come up with redesign if we decide to do anything. Gulf Boulevard beautification, that's the undergrounding project. And then after we underground power, the next step, I believe, would be the street lighting situation. And then beach renourishment, we know that's a major issue. There's, it's alternative funding, and the mayor's been working a lot with the county in nourishment moving forward if the army corps is not proceeding. So that's, that's where I have it. Hopefully you kind of just looked through, we've got the, the gist of the, of the document. And then what we do need to do is establish some new objectives.
Counselor?
I did have a question, Kyle, you may be familiar with this, so, once the undergrounding is ready, and it's onto Gulf Boulevard, let's say, for example, there was a street that connects Gulf Boulevard, let's say 20th Street, 10th Street. And if we wanted, and our street agreed to do undergrounding, would there be any financial benefit of attempting to coordinate that with the work that would be done on Gulf Boulevard, as opposed to doing it at a different date?
I would say no, I believe we're so far ahead of that kind of coordination or planning. The, the current plan now goes down Gulf Boulevard, and it comes one pole in each street. But to, at this point, have that design and whatever equipment, it'd be a ways out engineering-wise to plan, plus when you're dealing with in between those houses and those easements, you have a lot of vegetation issues that need to be taken care of.
So it does actually come one pole?
It comes one pole in, and then what has been done, I mean, the reason that Gulf Boulevard is being undergrounded is because there is plenty of infrastructure money running to that. The Bellevue Estates Island project was, it was an assessment that, that all those residents will turn to move forward and fund the project. I think the history is, at one time, the whole city was looked at for undergrounding, and it was sort of the feedback that not the whole city wanted to do it, and that's where they decided to do that separate assessment for the island.
Okay.
And then it was looked at afterwards, I believe I understood.
At Harrison Avenue, we looked at it because we didn't have a lot of homes. The price was about twice what they paid on Bellevue Island, so.
For the home?
For the home. And so obviously, getting other streets to buy in would make sense, but get the undergrounding on Gulf Boulevard done first, because that brings, like on Harrison, for instance, it brings the power all the way back to Bell Isle, not Bell Isle, excuse me, um, High Business. So, so it really eliminates a lot of expense. Yeah, Harrison also has the under water.
Suburbanous people.
So that drives the price quite a bit too. So, so there's just some, some ways by getting more streets to buy in, you know. Of course, Bell Isle's already undergrounded, we have to get hibiscus on board and taking that down, and I know some people.
I'm good.
So, you know, it saves the year, you could get a couple of the streets interested, and then we make. But, you know, like for 20 years, such a small, short street, by the time they bring it back to the first house, or the first pole, which is probably two houses in, which I think.
That's expensive.
You're not going to have a whole lot.
Just got there, just showing through.
That's what I'm saying, right now.
I wanted.
So I, I saw a presentation from Duke Energy concerning undergrounding, and that there, there's no incentive to, don't give any money for undergrounding. But what they said they would do, and right now they're doing it down south, is they are improving the bandwidth, how much energy they can actually pump into these neighborhoods, because all to require more and more power to keep everything running. And in some communities, they're building more, or they're building, that's usually what happens, knock one of the little ones down, you've got the big one that requires more power. So what they said is need, whenever I ask about what, what can we do, how can we cut our rates for getting these jobs done, they said, whenever we decide to upgrade your infrastructure, you are more than welcome to use those funds towards, rather than doing it overhead, do it underground, and then you pay the extra. So they would commit to the money they would be spending anyway. And then your neighborhood could pitch in, do the undergrounding. So that's one thing to consider, but you're probably going to be waiting a while, because there's not a lot of action going on in Bell Beach as far as building, it's a little in here, a little in there, and eventually, they will hit that saturation point where they're going to have to bring in more power.
And you have to remember, when you're underground, you're limited on how much you can transmit, because your cable size is reduced considerably through program. So the future says, depends what will happen in 2024, but we keep pushing electric, 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 electric heat, electric cars. Now we're putting all these cars on this grid, and when you hang a wire up top, you can increase that as much as you want. You can only use, I think we're at the max capacity now.
You're hitting a physical constraint.
Right, but I mean, you're at the max, I don't know if it's double zero wire or not that you're using for underground, but what I'm saying, you can't go anymore, where if they had a string more wire up top.
You can always hang it.
Yeah, you know, right, you can always hang it.
The, the solution of that is actually doing it, and that way you have continuous feed from, for both sides.
Yeah, I understand it, but still, you're limited on power right now, how much you can draw. And that's, I, I just can't see put 300 million cars on the grid in the United States.
For me, the undergrounding is unreliable, right? And so we, we had a small wind blow, and everyone on the street was out of power. So for each of your neighborhoods, pay attention, I had them come out and do work on our poles and replace poles, and we had, we had no power, we had no power losses. I called them and said, we've got issues, you need to come do this. And I called, the engineer got them out there, they agreed, they replaced a couple of poles, reran some power lines, and it worked, and we not had, you know, not had water outages at all, nothing for this to worry.
We just had one week ago, but it was a wire that somebody, contractor did. But when we were, when our man had here, we were out five days in the South End. And if you talk to Duke, their contractors, 90% of it was because of what we said, it's a vegetation that the homeowner didn't take care of.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to claim to work whenever it's directly behind the two homes, or they're back to back. Who actually owns the property line, no one does, and so it rarely ever gets done.
Yeah, but when you see it start climbing up, she's just saying, you need to address it, get somebody out there, and, and Duke will cut it, unless it's wrapped a metal transfer, and then you say, oh, I'm not a good man.
Well, I like what you said, Mayor, regarding, like the work that you've been doing. I wondered at that time, you said, well, our estimate's going to be $5. So that this would be a time, if you were interested in doing the underground, they would give you that $5 to yours, where the cost would be to go underground. And who will, going ahead, replacing the poles? I mean, I have transformers behind my house because of the software that look great off of. It, it may not be because of a power increase need, but they're going to have to come out there soon and rest that, because it looks really bad. So they're going to spend a pretty decent amount of money to replace transformers and wires and poles. And I was at one of that, it's a table, interested in doing this underground. I think that would be valuable, if they said, well, our estimate would be this much money, if you want to go underground, we consider paying that account to assist with that project.
I, I don't want to get too bogged down in this power conversation, but what I can tell you is if you have a deep interest in doing undergrounding, you have to get your neighbors to do it. You have to get them to buy it. And whenever we pitched this to, it started with the entire city, I mean, it started with a few island states, but whenever we said, well, you know, I'd really like to do it for the whole city, there were so many people that didn't want to pay that extra money, because it's not a nice hood and it runs in their backyard, no one can see it. And so you can only, you, you, you have to debarrish your teaching about where you want to get it done, and then you've really got to log your neighbors for buying, it's a lot of money for a long time. So, all right, what's next?
So you're asking for us to, to discuss this now, or are we going to move on and do this in another workshop, or what are we doing on?
Well, I know that it took several, several meetings to get this dialed in to where, where it is now. And, and I do see there's a lot of, a lot of items here that we resolved.
Yeah.
I will say that this council and our councils, we actually got quite a bit done, and the council before that also. The city's been going in the right direction, and we still owe kudos to Vice Mayor Gunn, because he did a great job of kind of dialing the city in and giving us focus. So my recommendation would be to start with this list that we've got, and our goals here, and Kyle's already knocked some of them out, and is there anything new to work on what's going forward? Where is it? Maybe we spend about, probably maybe next 30 minutes on this?
Okay.
Everybody feel all right with that? So Kyle, the, I'm looking at page 10, and this is where we start going through the list. One of the things that I saw, public safety and health, one of the things that, that I did not see, and I don't think that we ever actually came to a complete agreement on it, we were discussing ditching the generators, then we start kind of went back, and we were rehashing that, trying to make our mind on whether we were actually doing it or not. I know that we, we killed it, but then Vice Mayor Shirley brought it back up, and we started discussing again. You don't remember that?
No, I remember I saying it was too extensive.
After the last meeting, it was killed off, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I just felt it was too much, I was trying to draw, did we ever need? Have you ever needed, and that's why I discussed it, and we just go.
You never needed it.
Right. Well, I know, but at that point, after the hurricane, we needed to go in anyway. I didn't see a reason to invest $300,000 into something that we never used.
Okay, very, well, that, that was on the list, and that's why I brought it.
Working with public safety and health, had, somebody called in about looking at the waterways out here, where we're getting people that are zipping by, the jet skis, et cetera. We don't have any set zones for speed warning, and I noticed that in the Pinellas workup, they said that we should be at least looking at safety of boating. We will monitor the speeds of vessels, but, you know, perhaps in this area, that we put the, the safety buoys out. I don't know if they're speed buoys or.
I think it's in the waves zone already, really.
I, I mean, I don't boat out there, does anybody see the boats?
We have some piles assigned on them, and then some, some buoys. And it's, it's the, I don't know, wave by the speed is what the current.
Okay, but that's relatively close to the shore, not in the big area in the center, because I see the skiers out there quite frequently.
Yeah, and that's a lot.
Okay. Is there any problem with manatees out in that area? I know they're relatively close to shore, they tend to watch that, but.
Too hot right now.
Well, I mean, we do have them though. Any collisions between boats and manatees, like I said, in those areas where there's no limit?
We've had them right, we've had them hit right off of Sixth, 12th Street with the jet skis. In fact, I got two citizens that said, I didn't see it, but they said there was, they were doing some filming right off between Sixth and Seventh yesterday flying in. And I said, you sure they weren't residents of Bellar Shores?
Yeah.
Said, no, because then they took off and tried to hit the sea ducks up by 8th Street. Blew them all out of the water and they just kept going, going.
I don't think, you know, you're always going to have them and free access.
We can't legislate to anything.
I think the, for the most part, FWC has larved the waters adequately where they need to. There's, you're always going to have one that can water it in a strange area if it gets hit by a boat. But I don't think you could prevent it.
And we've got a lot of jet ski rentals, I mean, other than the one in talking to the jet ski rental place saying, you know, we don't allow them on Feller Beach or something like that, but I don't know how you do that. I mean, that's, those are the skiers you see out there.
Minimum wage kids renting the jet skis.
Yeah, and they drive it up here.
And people who have never been used a boat, driving a, you know, pretty powerful vessel.
Like those bicycles or those little carts they run, they come through our neighborhoods all the time. So there's nothing out here, people.
We've all seen what happens where we try to post a sign in the water. So I would refer personally to go down this road because I don't want to have to deal with herping and all the craziness that happens when we try this.
I would like to, while we're talking about waterways and public safety, I think that we still need to focus on the boat nights, the, you know, the warning fields that are being created out here. And they, many of them are just vacant. Maybe weekend people live on them. I don't know. And they're not pumping out, they're just dumping overboard. There are some regulations, but if it's not enforced, and I don't know how we, I know we are supposed to be monitoring and managing off of our property, you know, off of Bellar Beach. This side of the intercoastal, I believe, is what was, this came up before we talked about. And I know we don't have a boat to monitor that, but you know, can we engage the sheriff to do a little more monitoring, to ask for proof of registration, ask for proof of pumping out of those vessels? You know, it's, it's a hazard.
Did, I thought Lynn, because we brought this up when Lynn was still here.
Yeah, we had one towed.
And yeah, he cleaned up a lot of, remember some of them.
There was a abandoned one out there.
There was a couple. And from what I've seen, where is our, I guess, our jurisdiction really? Because it looks like they pushed them just right to the, that jurisdictional lines, I would say.
I think it's from what Lynn told me is this side of the intercoastal along Feller Beach.
And that's where I've seen that a lot of them were morgue, or you've seen them.
Well, we've got quite a few around the docked out here. So that, I don't know if that's us or.
Is that ours?
It looks like it. When you look at the maps from their Pinellas thing, they have the big black line.
A lot of them have moved over there.
Yeah, that thing.
On this side, they're, you know, in direct view.
We own two, three, four.
From April, I'm not sure, but.
Six hundred and one.
I can tell you the ones, which we have no control, the ones that are by the boat, I mean, the boat ramp. But it's, I drove through it with the boat the other night and literally there are no one off those boats. They're just, they're going to have safety right behind the boat ramp. And that's what we've done about it for sure.
They can take care of the aerolift vessels that can't navigate on their own fairly quickly. So if they're in, they're in bad condition, but they're the easy ones. But as far as just anchoring and not having anyone on them, I mean, I got a whole presentation about like how they're making every effort they can, but there's not much they can do, even though we have submerged lands out here that doesn't apply. They're on top of the water, so we don't own the waters. And my understanding is it doesn't make a difference how far out they are. They could be right up on us and do the same thing.
But we still can enforce registration, pump that, pump out, you know. We can add that to our code that if you are morgue out there and you haven't pumped out legally, then you can move on, you know, we can, you can be ticketed or fined. I mean, there are some requirements to having a vessel. You can't just like leave it.
Those requirements exist out there and try to enforce those. I don't know if we can, um, increase enforcement.
Until you get an enforcement capability, it's worthless. You can write all the laws in the book, but unless you got a boat.
We have to wait on Pinellas County to enforce it.
But if we talk to the sheriff and say, hey, I know we've got deputies patrolling the streets, we'd like to have someone on the waterway, you know, we'd like to see a schedule with the waterways. What's like, when is the deputy on our waterways?
I've never seen him out there. I've seen him in New York.
Yeah, out there, another problem you have also is if they're limited funding to actually do anything.
Gas is expensive, yeah.
For these boats. So let's say they, they tagged one and they, they have people removed and they find them and the boat's left there. Well, where are they going to take it? What do they do with it? And the reason why they did this once week was because they had funds. That's the way that it looked. They had so much funds and it costs money to drag these things and destroy them and discard them. So whenever you saw the ones with the big orange mark on them, those were the ones that the sheriff marked as, okay.
He was getting rid of those ones.
Yeah, and then they get funding to tow them away and then destroy them.
Right. And that only comes, it's not, it's not a lot of money.
Well, if you remember two, three years ago, there was just a pile of them going into Duddy which was the road and they finally cleaned them all up.
They moved, yeah.
Start piloting.
Yeah. They migrate.
Yeah. Well, we can certainly add this to the list and keep it on our radar. It's something that, it's always going to be a nuisance, but it should always be something that we're paying attention to because new opportunities may, may arise where we could actually make a difference with these boats.
And it's not, I mean, I think the biggest issue is when they start morguing behind someone's house, then we've got an issue, which happened again in 2012, right? There was a guy out there who was tied on, right? Not far behind where I was at home, so that, then it becomes an issue.
Yeah.
And if we don't have anything in place to handle it, then we're, you know, so we just need to be aware of it before it is an issue.
So would that, would you consider that a safety issue? Or would you consider it a beach waterfront issue, nuisance with which we should go?
I would say goal four, vibrant, well-planned, well-maintained appearance. So you say, hit that right there. I got this thing behind me, the black pearls, four behind my house.
Everyone has agreed with that?
Yep.
Increase fruity over contractor permitting. I like that. One of, one of the things that I've noticed is that even though we look at plans and they run through the standard process, we don't have a tool in place to actually find out if those plans are accurate. We don't have anyone physically going through the property and taking a look at it. You have to take the designer's plan, replace value and make a decision on it. Is that the case?
That's correct. The Pinellas County Building Services is our building department through the agreement. So when they expect, they're supposed to verify the work that's being done and when any extra work has happened. So I've had different cases where I had suspicions that there could possibly be more. And I've kind of mentioned something, but that really is what they do. But I do understand having a large county handling it. In our jurisdiction is definitely Mark and I, but I can see how, you know, there could, it could get lost on some of the details. That's why I try to, if I do see anything that stands out as possibly extra work or something differently, I try to flag them on it. But I know what you're saying.
Is it possible that maybe, maybe our other enforcement could check during construction? Something like that. There should be some way that we could at least raise a red flag if we suspected that there was an issue in a permit that's incorrect or not being filled the way that they do.
I think Steve, W D P, does, you know, monitor what is occurring and does check in with our office on what permits are actually being held. And then really what, what's being done inside the house, that's all on the county. Because what we can't see, we can't force.
Yeah, we don't have anybody certified to really do it. Nobody's trained architects, engineer. They, one of our drive-by guys cannot assess that legally. I mean, he can't say, oh, your load bearing wall's here. No.
So the city's mainly looking at the zoning and the floodplain code. I think a lot of my attention gets directed to make sure people are following the remodeling rules and not doing anything more than, I think it should be one for the positive money. At least I was trying to manage my rules.
I was going to say, with my experience, you know, once a permit is already a fine for and give it to you and counties involving, they do a very good job of ensuring the works being done according to the permits. So the only issue would be where they are definitely coming to play would be if somebody did not put in their permit and he doesn't reach out and touch it. But once, once there is a permit, I bet two to three days some gas lines put in and the town is all over it.
Yeah. Sure as you're born.
Well, I'm going to share a story about someone that I know that has some progress. And they had a plan that looked good. It was pretty much a city, it was pretty much a county. The dock company came out and they built according to the plan. But what they didn't do is they didn't take the pie shape angle into consideration. And they treated the guy's property as a straight, square piece of land. So he thought he was going to have this nice dock and boat lift. And come to find out after the dock was built, it was only going to have a foot between his lift and his favorite property line. So he had to, he couldn't build his boat because they completely got it wrong. And I think that if someone had actually seen the property, I don't know. It just seems like.
Was the boat dead shodding on the original?
Yes, it was. I think that just somehow or another, there's something missing in our way that we're issuing permits and giving approval. And it's way more than you should have to do, but.
That's, that's really weird because the tax partial, you have the visual aspect today. I mean, engineers should pick that up, no one's saying like that. This isn't a rectangle or a square property.
It is, if you're a good engineer and you're paying attention. But if you're not a good engineer or you're just signing whatever.
The dock company built it.
They George to say.
Yeah.
Good and bad.
Right.
So are you saying that the, were the property lines projected correctly in the permit application? And they built it wrong?
I, I think the way that they drew the plan of it looked like the property line went 90 degrees out from the land. But the truth is, it was like this. And so you would run right into it. And so you didn't, you didn't get the bills with the boat. Because there was a problem. You just halt the projects and I'm not going to change anything because I'm at least within the 12th set back. But you know as well as I do a lot of this property line. And so if he had put that in there, it would have been put away from this neighborhood property. And my point is, is that this poor guy, all he was doing everything right. Called a practical company, they drew the plans, they went through the entire system. And whenever it was time to install the metal structure, the beams, the boat, he couldn't do it because he realized, uh-oh, I'm, this is going to be way too loose. So.
That's kind of, I think, I guess, yeah, the engineering aspect of it. And like what I've seen through this past year is a lot of architects and engineers submitting drawings that aren't well done and then trying to have a city engineer work through the errors in the drawings, which really isn't with their purpose. So.
Yeah, I think that's what I was going to say is I know that we're having trouble with not being setbacks, things like that. Plans were set for the county, the county would approve, you know, some basic errors were on there. So now we have an engineer reviewing the site plan before they go to the county. And that's been a huge help. I mean, that's helped eliminate a lot of the problems. Is he looking at the dock plans too? Probably not, right? Maybe we should get our.
No, we're, we're looking at the dock plans and we're looking at the projections of the property lines.
Yeah.
But you're only as good as, as the drawings are, right?
Yeah, but it's, this drawing.
The drawing was completely wrong.
So I got to fall, that falls back on the company and the engineer. Because, you know, a lot of plans, if they build it differently than what they say, then it just becomes a violation of our code. So I mean, I'm dealing with somehow, you know, like a, either with the pervertious ratio. Sometimes they give you one plan, but they put in more or, or the elevations on what they say are different.
Well, and I think the, the challenge you're facing too is you're looking to create policy around anecdotal instances which are, which are difficult to regulate towards. That, that those events certainly happen are not necessarily indicative of a systemic issue. And you guys are looking at strategic plans and systemic visioning and policymaking, which I think is a little harder to say, nitty gritty, we're going to change everything because this one thing happened where, which could have just been an anomaly in the process. Something else to consider.
I wouldn't necessarily say it's an anomaly. I would say that this one was caught.
Right.
But I had to guess that there's plenty of people that are stretching, stretching their permit to make it work. And I guess if, if we're not the ones inspecting it and it goes to the county and they approve it, is it on the county for approving it or is it back on us for not?
Well, it's on us for reviewing what they submit, not that it's changed. Then I'd say that the county's going to inspect it at that point.
But I think back to that site, the site issue, and I'm just being very brief because I know this is, we're talking about codes, stuff we shouldn't be discussing right now. But, but that's, I think I've always said, we need to be inspecting these sites, these sites as they're being built. Even though we're not given an official construction inspection, but because of just that, you get a loose landscape plan and before you know it, the entire yard is paved with concrete or something, which was not what they submitted, but they pushed the limits and, you know, I've shared with you a couple of my neighbors, they've, they've gone in and put concrete down both sides. Their entire backyard is concrete and, you know, that's not allowable.
No, it's not. And in a case of a new construction, I'm looking at that, I want you to seal inspection. So I'm measuring setback, I'm measuring the pervertious surface. I try to pay attention to those things, is that they're being worked through. But if what they do married to the plan, that's kind of on time. Whether it's being out there policing or respecting, but I think it's important that we look at the major things.
But that's, we could do that review because I don't think we were doing that at one time. So it's improving as we go, is my point, as we're changing some things that is helping.
And we're constantly watching the landscape because there's no permit is required for landscaping. So we do have a lot of code that covers where things can and can't be, trying to sound that.
All right, I'll move on from that, but just a quick summary. Base hike is EVO. See, it's, it's on this list and I know that there are things you can flag. you can flag, if we have any plans to do with this.
That's one thing I, I saw on there and then I never kind of made it over to the objectives list. I never heard a hundred percent yes, a hundred percent no, so it's kinda still on my table of timelines.
Not on my table, we've not, we've not really discussed it.
Um, it would fall under the base side part, we do have money in base side part of the permit and we did, we did do the playground replacement, we moved that money to make sure that it was compensated for the last year's budget.
Anyone else like to make comments on goal number one?
So is that a, is the base side gazebo getting scratched? Is that something we'll still need for the site?
It's still on the list, as it go, we haven't officially approved it.
Wonder if we've ever asked, you're talking right out here, right? Is, have we ever asked the parties that do use this place, would you like to see a gazebo or would you have used a gazebo if offered? That we have some actual data to work off of. If they're coming back, no, 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 then okay, scratch it. But if they're coming back, yeah, would have paid X, great.
Yeah, and we can do that. I mean, Mark can easily survey, run this facility and get their opinion as a component.
Or, or more importantly, maybe the parks committee.
Yeah, yeah, let them.
I like the way you delegated.
So you're saying all the residents of the hole versus the renters? Because most of our renters are actually non-residents.
Yeah, but the parks will do the.
Parks will tell us, would it be helpful for them to have it on their corner ends or would residents use it? That type of thing, you know, when they do the concert in the park, I think it might be a nice thing to turn that.
Yeah, and they'll probably ask you, do we have data? And they can add that into their recommendation.
Share with them that, you know, show a drawing of it and maybe it's not bad, but it's something that's one or two.
On the 12th Street crosswalk traffic island situation, we've kind of beat this one to death. I mean, is, is there anything to monitor? And we, we considered dropping it, we considered keeping it, and then we finally decided, yes, we have to have it, but people can't get out without it. But does it still belong on this list?
I, I don't know if we, in my mind, we've reached that point because last, I recall that we're having the county kind of re-study the whole situation.
That's still being.
Yeah, it's still open, yeah.
Anything else you'd like to add to goal number one, Council?
So the X divided walking trail, they, they got names, right?
Yeah, that was killed.
The playground's done.
Mm-hmm. Well, we'll wait until we get done.
Wow. The building is still done, but I think we keep that, it's one of the days beyond, right? It's always.
It's always gonna be there, that's one of the things that regular maintenance.
Eternal vigilance.
You know, the, I'm sorry, the city, the statewide lighting, I've got a kind of a varied response of citizens to talk to. I thought everybody would be in favor of more and better lighting.
I would say.
And I, that's not what I've seen. I've seen maybe fifty percent of the people saying, yeah, light and lighting. And I've had fifty percent of the people saying, I don't want anyone else. I mean, the light, the lighting is there, whether it be pretty dim in the yard going around the street. So those things, I, I kind of thought we would want more lighting, but didn't seem like that was the case.
In, in my case, I wanted more lighting, but I didn't want it in my front yard.
Right.
Yeah.
Which means we had more.
Yeah, it might be skewing, yeah. There's one from my house, I don't want it.
It was a difficult situation whenever they were doing solar lighting, no drive to the states. Apparently, there was a lot of negotiating with neighbors and trying to find safe spots, but I think for the most part, once finished, everyone just said, well, I've got one now or I don't, and they were pretty happy with the way it turned out.
And then the light fixtures.
But they really shit is light fixtures at about, yeah, eight-foot high, so nobody gets them, they just go down on the ground, but can't do that.
I mean, they weren't direction on side of the streetlights.
I'd be loud if you see dark spots.
I want a day glow road.
And you said you need a streetlight on the tile.
Yeah.
And you just said, then let me get a streetlight.
Survey, yeah.
And we worked with the shields and the, there's a dimming settings on the west end. Drop it.
First go around.
I want a lighted road.
They go brighter than they are right now.
Okay, cool. Well, that also addresses the modernized lighting back there on page fourteen as well.
Yeah, we're on both of you.
Yeah.
All right, deliver the best value for the taxpayer. Dollar, file it as a management based on targeted outcomes. Why, why is dollar in blue? Just curious, is that, is that a Glenn Dunn emphasis?
There's some blue.
Not on ours.
Not on ours.
Really?
I would check that pixel.
Oh, it's me, I highlighted it. Okay, let's see, best value focus, effective provision, sustainable resource, refine the budget process, capital planning, contracts, city investments, I think we're doing all of that already. Continue to invest in our human resources and city staff, well, we did that with Kyle.
And you also did the, the reviews of the job descriptions? I know yours was done, but anybody else?
We, our last job description review was 2019. We just did the personnel policies and employee handbook, and that's being reviewed right now by the board.
And we annually review compensation. There is some training development going on, but most part we do very well with human resources and city staff, but I'd like to get the city manager's opinion on that.
I believe we're, we're doing, we're doing well and like I said, we just were updating our personnel policies. I have some proposal in the budget on how to best use staff and, which I'll get to at a later meeting, but dealing with the administrative assistant, we had a position on there, but we filled it temporarily for about three weeks. It just didn't pass.
Which position was it?
Admin assistant, we get a little bit more, I guess, hours in the front office to assist with the clerical stuff.
So that was for a part-time position, right?
That was a part-time, yes. And I believe when we talked about last budget cycle, when we agreed to lower the hours of code enforcement, I think that's worked out well, that we're still enforcing code effectively. And that, that is a price, it's a high price tag, kind of the sheriff's office do it, so that's something to kind of weigh out, I think, with staff as well. Not saying get rid of one or the other, at this point.
We're talking about weekends?
Um, no, I'm just talking about the contractual hours with the Dallas County Sheriff to do code enforcement versus more hours of just general staff and how we can.
Letting our staff.
Accomplish what we need to do.
Are we giving the training and development to the staff as needed? I mean, do you see opportunity to do it in the long term?
Um, I think we're doing fairly well. I mean, we just started airing community services, you know, be doing, you know, the public works, developing things like that.
And there's some kind of available, you can send out to.
There's, there's, well, they do classes, like, like conferences, classes, I could look into, but, you know, formalized certification.
I mean, I know you could train them, but there's probably some opportunity for them to do a certification program, but be how parent figures on, you know, you let's say.
Currently, I think Maddie's pretty well-colluped in her position. I think we have an ongoing safety program where we're doing our training in-house for our public works staff. And then as far as code enforcement, I think, you know, if there is training for that and certifications just to better understand the process, I think how we would want that.
Are we still doing code enforcement on the weekends?
We are. Steve Barry's scheduled to do Saturday or Sunday, and he might have a weekend. He tries to, you know, mix it up.
Yeah. But in-house, we don't do anything on weekends.
Right now, I don't do anything in-house on weekends. That could be arranged.
So it looks like we've got that area covered pretty well. Do a great job and just keep checking, keep moving forward with the, the training and opportunities to learn.
Couple of questions. So Kyle, if that part-time admin position was a full-time admin position, is that a position that you could keep busy if it was full-time? Because apparently I'm hearing it's difficult to find somebody part-time with the skill sets that you need.
Yes.
If it was a full-time person working that particular position, I know you guys wear a lot of different hats, would you be able to keep that person doing things that the city needs?
And what I would do is get them more involved with the code enforcement and a lot of, a lot of the things that are done in the office as well that do with code enforcement because the sheriff's deputy does the field work, but there's still a lot of that work is done with all the data notices and the hearing dates and the coordination fines invoicing. So there's a lot of work inside that gets done with code enforcement.
What would we have to do in order to, do we have the money and the budget to go ahead and advertise for a full-time admin as opposed to a part-time? Can we lose some funding around or something?
As of now, at this date, we could, we could advertise and be able to, we have enough money in the budget to compensate someone for the rest of the budget here. Because we haven't had that position filled for just under a month.
But would that impinge upon other requirements like, you know, storm, all the needed work?
Um, I don't think it would impinge on it. I think that being such a small city and we're all kind of like hybrid staff, where we do a lot of different things.
Because I'm looking at also, you gotta double-load it. I mean, you got the salary, everybody thinks salary, but that's full-time now. Health benefits, welfare revision, everything. So that's kind of a, it is sort of a big, big chump there. I mean, we could put it in the budget to look at.
And that's, that is all some consideration, you know, moving, like I said, like the contractual employee with the, with the sheriff, those hours are very expensive. But yeah, when you have full-time, you have the benefits that are included, but part of the problem with being able to fill that position, I think, is if you offered that full-time with a little, it's more instead of, another thing I'm thinking about is, I can't say exactly when, but we do have, there's going to be staff turnover due to retirements in the future, and I think it's important to try to get somebody in the office. Maybe that's gonna work a little ways in the future as younger to kind of start learning the ropes to make a transition. So again, I can't say.
I mean, I'd, would be possible, I mean, you're looking at, you know, hey, okay, fine, let's put this forward as a budget proposal, but along with a time phase, I mean, your best shot at, okay, here's my employers, here's their, really their range of, you know, sundown. So I kind of know how I'm phasing these employees out, how I'm phasing these employees in, that might help us to get a better handle and go, okay, our needs will be met for a longer period of time with a more optimum selection of resources, meaning you have a full-time person, but you're balancing it perhaps with less hours on a contract basis with, you know, the person pointing out to review code, because you sell a lot of it's the backend paperwork, so we can, you know, move some resources around, but we'd need to see the, your resource loading.
Right. And then, again, with the, with the staff turnover planning, you know, it's just, I have a feel for it.
It's a guess.
It's not an exact thing because, you know, life changes all the time.
I know, yeah, it's a broad, just an idea.
It sounds like you answered my question, Kyle, which was if we had a full-time person in there, you would have plenty for them to do and a lot of good reasons in addition to that, to have that person hopefully capable of holding to a position down the road due to some potential retirement and so forth.
And I hope the city manager realizes that we're not trying to manage its personnel, but if you certainly, if you determine that you need extra resources or budget increase for whatever, it's, it's your domain, just make the recommendation, give us some numbers, take a look at it and take a vote on it.
And I have heard some feedback from people that are just unsolicited, talking to me about, and I don't know what our goals are, about answering calls at City Hall. I've had people talk to me about, nobody ever interested in me. And maybe that's, maybe we don't want to do that, maybe you wanted to go for it, I'm not sure, but it's a lot of negative response all the time. I think it would be great if we had somebody, a staff there so that it does get answered every time. It just gives you a better feeling, you know, as a citizen, somebody who's ever come to hi, may help. Although, when I do leave a message, because it's happened to me before, you guys always get back, I'm sure you get back really good to me in the most because I'm recorded. Yeah, I just think if, if that person was full-time, that person would also be taking on more responsibility of addressing citizens coming to the front, responding to the phone, I think that's huge.
All right, I'm gonna ask if we move.
Okay.
So we've got obviously the human resources aspect covered and it's something that will continue to be one of our goals and focus on. The F A J O L prescriptions, evaluations, compensation, training and development, we discussed that, that will stay on. Continue to optimize C I P, evaluate effective, offer burn rate. I think we've done, we've done a new job also, finding creative ways to honor our projects and get things done and not go into, any comments on that one? So that one definitely needs to stay on, engage citizen advisory committee. We do that every opportunity we can.
Yes.
And we are truly grateful for them because we will be very, if we had to do everything that the citizen advisory committee does on top of our regular positions. Let's see, maximize return on investment, City Hall, Marina, Marina parking lot, I think we're doing a great job of that also. Kyle, do you have any comments?
I think over the years, recent years, we've really, there's a lot of rentals between weddings and events that just still are definitely maximizing space in here.
And obviously, we're discussing the Marina tonight, so it's one of those things.
We've got the parking mobile too.
Always focused on. Leverage grants, special assessments. It's nice to get grants and we're definitely taking advantage of the special assessments. Something that should just always be on the radar, looking for creative funding, develop the grant policy, best practice.
That's ongoing, yeah.
That's on tonight's agenda also. Integrate with all capital projects and budget processes.
Yes.
Any opportunity we get, we take care of these capital projects. Grants, special assessments. We should, I mean, it's just a few. The, the whole goal number two is, is pretty much, yeah, whatever we do.
Yeah.
Right.
Leverage technology, especially communications.
Did it upstairs here.
We did a good job there and we continue.
Can I just interrupt a little bit and just put me off, or repeat, I probably shouldn't get into the clean skin, but speaking of communication, I had someone say, and the residents would not rent this facility for their way because those TVs didn't fold up and that, and there's nothing you can do about making them go away when you're trying to make this a nicer rental.
You could put a cover on them.
And I know that they do some brackets that flip up, so we might at some point look at doing some of that, but just because it came to my mind.
You have to relocate, flip them up.
I don't know what that bracket, they may fold up now, I don't know.
Then you can drag up the ceiling and then you can straighten the ceiling, but having this, or that, I don't think there's ceiling.
I'd probably just load a visual on it, you know. I'd probably just load a visual on it, you know, like a, you know, happy wedding.
Yeah, put the bride and the groom there or something.
That's right. Videos of your, from your dad. That's a good idea.
And the final item on this is budget process based on strategic goals and objectives. That's something that we'll be doing this time and we'll do this every year. And it is seven thirty, which is time. Seven thirty-six. We'll give the city manager a second to start the Zoom. All right, now we're back from our break and we are moving on to goal number two, page two. Which is integrate rescue funds into the budget. Reallocate store water funds for both Boulevard. Another C I P. So we could, that's. Still, that's in progress right now. So it's still on our, on our goal list. Maybe emergency generator acquisition for FEMA grant, if that didn't happen. That would need to be. It's interesting that it's on goal one and goal two.
Because I think we had FEMA grant on the goal two with the tax dollar value instead of self-funding. It's a guess.
Develop a local intern program with local schools, I T and website, admin, financial services. I don't think we're doing anything for that. Is this something that's, should be one of our goals? Or is this, is this something that seemed like a good idea at the time?
I think it was like an idea for someone to help with the administration of the Zoom. I mean, it's always something you could pursue. I don't know if we're gonna find it.
I could say that I have an intern right now. What the intern is doing, he's a highly specialized skill and not somebody just runs and figures. Can anyone think of a reason why we would have this?
I don't think of a reason because frankly, that's the city manager, you know, when you need manpower, you direct if, how, when.
I think the only question would be is, are there any schools that have, well, I mean, community colleges or whatever that have a city government type program that we could actually, like helping, so in a way it's not self-serving, writing or helping build more. As you say, you may have people retiring and if you're intent on bringing interns through a program that could help our city, you could eventually bring on employees or have that pool of people available. But I don't know if there's, you know, we're not, we're not near Tallahassee.
No.
There's like, you know, I don't know, so that.
Now, S P C has a public policy and they do that. That's their last, their keystone project is all working with the city government in a specific project. They, they pitch it, they move it, they run it.
The problem with that interns is that you have to have personnel trained that way. That's where we run into issues.
We don't have enough.
Our staff doesn't have time to be the handler of an intern. The intern that I have right now takes up a lot of my time and, you know, I'm enjoying it, but at the same time, is it, is there any benefit to anyone other than the intern? And the question or the answer is, is that, it's a good time. So if we have those types of resources, I'm all for it. Otherwise, I would be against bringing in interns.
I would say, I would be with you.
I was thinking one, one of the, you know, the bright futures, if we could just get a straight-up volunteer, not too technical, but just need hours.
Right.
But you do manage that, right?
Yeah.
You have to talk to whoever, school or government cabinet volunteer, you know, unless parks was managing that or you're something like that. You have to have someone manage your volunteer.
And I still think that there's someone here that, I mean, there's not a lot of benefit showing someone how to run a Zoom meeting. But I bet that there's volunteers in this community that would step right up and help us out. And that's nominal training and you're not having to get out of your seat every time and start and stop it. And it'll be a volunteer position.
So instead of that, do we just maybe have a goal of trying to find volunteers instead of.
Yeah. See, community volunteers.
Anything else this council would like to add to goal number two?
I think, I know that Kyle's, you know, on the grant program, so she would just, could you add that as?
The grant program? Leverage grants, special assessments, develop a grant program. It's on the page before. All right, last opportunity to add something, tax dollar value. All right. Now we're on to goal number three. I think after we wrap up goal number three, let's pause this one because we've got quite a few pages. And then we'll move on to the next discussion item and then we'll move into discussion back. Because there's several pages to goal number three, maybe we.
Probably stop now.
Let's at least cover the first, first page and then we'll take a pause and then we'll pick back up at our next work session. All right, so content community goal three, credible, timely and transparent information and feedback between the city and residents. Engender pride of ownership, inclusion, stability. I wonder where that came from. So the first, the first item in that goal is foster code compliance versus enforcement, educate and communications. So I think that that's going on right now. Dave DeClacka does a good job of trying to educate and not just smack people for doing the wrong thing. How do you?
That's an ongoing battle with having a, a uniformed officer. I think it can kind of come across threatening. But I've been working in a lot of different scenarios where just trying to have an approach of not too harsh of enforcement, unnecessary. Initial communication friendly and for the goal to achieve compliance of where it needs to be and not come across too, too aggressive, I guess I'd say. So yeah, that's ongoing, but I think it's coming from inside the city and our approach on code enforcement, that's always our approach. The, the goal is to get the problem solved and, you know, different situations call for a different understanding and then working up resident. But yeah, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Would you say that Dave DeClacka has improved in the way that he handles these situations?
Yeah, I think we've sort of tailored what, how he approaches each situation based on what the, what Ballard Beach is focused on, what's important. Because we all know there's like, there's different laws and codes that you can always, you could enforce in every situation. Or there could be, you know, identifying one thing that's very important in Ballard Beach, like the fact that you need a permit to do, say, work. As opposed to, you also notice that there's not the appropriate signage on the vehicle, which is a state statute. But I've been trying to direct them more into what was important for our community versus, you know, enforcing every, everything that's possible to enforce.
And there's certainly a different attitude that goes along with, let's say, erecting a second story without a permit versus your head is getting too high. So there's certain times where I appreciate this permit, especially with contractors, illegal, you know, any type of construction work that's being done illegally.
Sure, that's very important.
Okay. We covered that just, that one should always be, that, that attitude, a lot of the line in there just basically reflects that, hey, we're thinking of our community, not only from your safety and enforcement standpoint, but also that we want to make sure that you understand how to do it.
Right.
Modernized lighting, we've already discussed this and maybe that was item one or goal one. But this is something we're not really doing much with at this moment, but it is something that we should keep on already on as part of the last work.
I, I continue to work through options with Duke Energy. So I do have some information. As we get, feel like we get to that point, we want to start considering what our options are. But I have the authentic communication with Duke and the solar lighting companies, just understanding what we can do. You know, kind of what, what, the minimum we can do and then what might be like our, our dream idea of what we could do to, to lighting.
Now for the areas where there's poor lighting, but the electricity runs behind between the backs of the homes. Are we just automatically looking at solar or are we, are we, whenever you're taking, you're evaluating our options, are you considering undergrounding to where the poles should be?
That would be considered to, it's pros and cons in different, it just depends on the street. There's some areas where if you replace a pole, you're probably gonna put it at a different location. There's, there's areas where, when you're talking about undergrounding, that does involve getting easements. So there's a little extra light work. If you're gonna go that route, the nice thing about solar is that you could pretty much replace them wherever you need to replace them. There's another thing that came up with the lighting arms that Duke Energy provides, have a little bit more reach to them. So that's beneficial on the county maintenance of the Gulf Boulevard, where that's not as important here in the neighborhoods. So yeah, it's kind of something, depending on where we're trying to upgrade, where it just kind of needs to consider the pros and cons of, of what is available out there. Another thing that came up on Gulf Boulevard is the consideration for turtles. Duke Energy is now doing amber lighting, which is certified by the N C D. And, you know, to people in the community, that's a concern. If you're gonna upgrade your lighting, they want, they want it firecoming friendly.
Okay, all right. As long as we, I think, I believe council would agree with me that as long as we have maybe a game plan. What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see where the darkest areas in Ballard Beach, where do we need it most? And, and some sort of a schedule eventually to where, okay, we're budgeting X number of dollars per year for street lighting. Here's the order that we're doing, because there are some streets out there that are just dark. Night street always comes, it's, three lights, the worst street. And I hope that that's gonna be resolved.
When you ask for the lighting studies, I tend to find that they give you the layout of what optimal lighting is. I might be able to work with the Duke engineers to find out the dark spots or focus on that. Because usually they end, okay, this is what you need or what you should have. But it doesn't really, it shows you all the initial lights and I guess you could do it in reverse of counting where more lights are reinstalled in the darkest areas.
But obviously this is a later conversation, but I just want to make sure that we, if we're gonna keep this in our strategic plan, we're actually making it.
Definitely. We've been funding and I'd want to kind of come up with some ideas of where, what direction we're gonna move in.
All right, that leads me to the next issue.
Yeah, so when Duke does that, is that a costing? Do they charge us for that? Yes, that's pretty.
Yeah, I'm trying to realize that that's not.
So what they can actually do, I gave the mayor that we actually have a citywide plan that Duke could do for us. And he could, and there may be issues like, he just brought up earlier, one street said, would we like to have lights like they have on the southern street? But it may not be possible because of the power, options available on your street versus over here, that type of thing. But I think, I think it's key to have a citywide plan so that people can see that and understand what the, what the plan is for the streetlights on their street. And maybe they could get feedback and then say, well, maybe they, what I'm gonna ask them, want because for safety reasons, we feel like this is the plan and we need to put those streetlights in. And we're gonna do it pretty best to make sure that we're not aggressive lighting to where it's shining or that.
Yeah, I think even city staff could analyze what our current placement of lights are throughout the city. And we could, we could almost establish, establish where the best streets are by, you know, light per so many feet. And then where the worst place. And then if we could establish a standard we're trying to meet, where it'd be somewhere we're at and we work towards it.
And thoroughly evaluate solar options and grants. I'm not sure about the grants, but I know that you've been looking at the various options. And whenever you look at the solar lighting, are you using Bellevue Island Estates for a case study or anything?
I use, as far as the maintenance, since we've installed them, definitely as a case study. And recently, now that we've kind of worked out the kinks, because we did have some battery replacements, we had to do, there were some programming issues. It's been a good run. I would say in almost the last year straight, because we had a lot of issues on Alita. And that was mainly because the settings were off. So they, they completed the batteries, causing us that to be replaced. Which, which they're good with setting us new ones and needing them replaced. But I think our staff has gotten very good at maintaining those. And what we do is we try to work them in, the maintenance, as we have the list for other purposes.
And that proves that we're still looking into things. How, how's it going with grants?
I was gonna cover that more in the, in the, in the policy I drafted, but I can let you give an update. I'm currently working on trying to get something for the undergrounding project. I, I passed it through the county's L M S working group and they're ranked number three on the list. So if we can qualify for funding, it's there. We're ranking, you know, because the L M S determines what, what the order of the project. So we got really tied along with the, with the county. Problem is that, that the cost ratio is meeting that standard. And the, the grant, it's a hazard mitigation grant for Hurricane Ian. So the money's there. Right now, I've scheduled the new consultation to assistance with working through this cost ratio. I've been bouncing around a lot of different ideas of how to assure the cost savings for the price of the project. And that's, that's our. savings for the price of the project, and that's, that's our greatest battle that we face in Miller Beach, is kind of reaching, meeting that with the low residents and the costs of some of the projects, and there's some other issues, when it comes to grants, the, when it comes to storm waters, the whole, tied into a regional system, and then there's obviously a social economic factor, where you can have lower requirements based on being approved.
The classic rural Miller Beach. So, we'll keep them on the, we'll keep them on our goal list until they're done. I'll make that, once we get past all of the stormwater projects, then that'll be the big focus, as you say. All right, expand Marina parking lot utilization and refile.
Expand Marina parking lot utilization.
You know, like, here's an idea, and I was thinking about this maybe later, but looking at the sand stations here, wherever we had a hurricane, we have a situation where we, one, clog up the street with traffic, and if there's any rain, it tends to clog up the drainage here, but it's an industrial type activity, loading sandbags, where we could just move those over to the parking. In the Marina parking, put those off to the side, like we store items for undergrounding.
What are you talking about?
Well, this is actually expand the Marina parking lot utilization.
I didn't know, I'm talking, you're talking about moving some.
Sorry, moving the sandbag stations.
Oh, okay, all right.
Should have prefaced that. Yeah, moving the sandbag stations to the Marina parking lot, because we have more room for traffic, they can come in one side, go out the other, and it's an industrial type area for an industrial type use. If we move those bins from here, then it goes back to be in a park with additional parking, and it eliminates that, that traffic tie-up for the residents of the street.
Well, putting the sandbag down in the Marina, that's an evacuation. Plus, there's an island right there. Do you really want to clog up an artery for evacuation for sandbagging, because people are trying to get in and coming out?
We're clogging it up here.
It's nine street, it's one little street to clog, and, and you know, I've been here nine years, and I've worked that sandbag place for nine years, and I've only ever seen it clogged up once, and that was this past being storm that everybody thought, thank you lord for not hitting us.
Okay, so, hold on a minute. Why don't we do this? I think that if this is something you'd like us to seriously.
Yes.
Add to the work sessions in the next meeting, and then we'll, we'll flush that.
Yeah.
So, we don't get in the weeds on this conversation.
Yeah, move that on.
You guys over, over here with that?
Yeah.
All right, so, there was add an engine flushing station?
I think I put that in, and I agree, you can remove it.
Do you put that in?
I think I put that in. Looking at, you know, almost turning that into a full Marina, but I, I didn't know there was really not a, a use for it.
Well, actually, there'd be plenty of use for it, but do we want to maintain it, and do we want to have it monitored and all that, especially whenever the city of Clearwater is so great, relies with two of them across the intercostal, and then one or maybe two of them also at the, the gas station. So, yeah, I would like to look at that. Does everyone else agree?
Yeah.
Not to mention the one at the causeway, which only has cost to go for you.
Oh.
Which they then did remove.
Jeez.
They had two nice ones down there, but.
You guys can't have nice things anymore.
Yeah, it's, it's a shame.
Minimize above ground utilities, but we discussed us quite a bit tonight. We know that if we add our way, we probably do it everywhere, but we also know that it's something that requires a lot of effort for individual neighborhoods, but it's something we'll always talk about and consider. Do we want to leave it on here?
Yeah.
Yeah? All right, mature manicure, foliage vegetation, yeah, we were down to give, develop the citywide maintenance program.
We did that in year one of the plan, of the strategic plan.
So, should we change it from develop to maintain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And complete a city asset inventory to include city staff. We have that knowledge.
We have an asset inventory, but, so they want, I'm not sure where this is going, they want to have staff included in some way.
I don't, I don't know where they handle. So, council?
Can remove it.
To include city staff. And, I mean, it's complete now, do we even need this on here?
No. What does this last one really mean? I don't understand it, about breaking out of walking easement.
It, it was along the lines of when we were doing the street, we're paying that we would do the sections of the lighting easement.
Oh.
That died.
That died, yeah.
Yeah, that's gone, right?
I think we shouldn't have to remain in there maintaining, which I could be brought up into your maintenance program, but make sure that wasn't.
Could you repeat that question there?
Yeah, I said, the walking easement should be part of the maintenance program.
Okay.
And just have that as part of that maintenance program, to make sure that's the rest of the people, right?
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
And a lot of the, the maintenance with the walking easement, I mean, it gets encroached on the, the shrubbery, so that's a good question to stay on that.
All right, is everyone okay with taking a break from this, but continuing in the next work session?
Yes.
So, we're stopping at page fifteen, that's the rule. All right, let's leave on to item number three, Marina rental policy. And I said I placed this on the agenda, this is something that I actually worked on with the city manager, but the city manager's not actually, I think he should present this.
Sure. So, we went over the existing slips that we have available for rent. They're numbered one through nineteen, but really, slip one is unusable, it hasn't been used in a while, so, part of this first page here is a renumbering, reassigning of the slips. And then, based on the sizes of the slips, we did some comparisons of how they, how they group together, and the idea is to classify different size slips, A, B, and C, and you can see that class A would be the largest slips, and those would range, I don't have the exact, they're based on with, being with the slip, but the idea is that those larger slips that could accommodate longer boats, wider boats, that you designate those slips for boat lengths of thirty to forty feet. And then the next class down would be a class B, and that would be for boats twenty-four to thirty-four feet, and the smallest slips would be a class C, and they would be for boats twenty to twenty-eight feet. And the, the purpose of this is to maximize the available space in the Marina to try to, again, provide it for residents, but to get, to make sure we're not sticking a twenty-foot boat in the biggest slip that we have.
But I thought the, we were looking at this, and the resident should have that ability to make the decision. If they're willing to pay that amount, they don't have to have the boat that matches that. They could stick their kayak in there. If they are on the list and they're willing to pay it, put them in there. I don't want to force the resident to buy a two million dollar boat just to have the ability to put it in Marina, and I think that's what we're trying to head for. That's why I was kind of shocked, I saw the numbers, but I don't see a plan. And that's what we're going to look at, the, how you rank people, perhaps reranking what we already have out there, and providing the residents the ability to purchase a slip regardless of their boat.
You might apply a.
I can see what you're saying.
So, so what we did was, we came up with an A, B, and C pickling, okay? And that's where you get in line for. And so, now, if any one of the, let's just say you picked A, and any one of those slips comes available, and you're the next person in line, whether you have a boat or not, then you, you can get that slip. However, by you selecting A, then you are committing that you are going to have no more or no less than, I'm sorry, no less than thirty feet, no more than forty feet. We also provide you with the option to go and shop and find a boat, but during the six months that you're looking for a boat, and you don't, until you have a boat, we even work with you where you can, you'll get a thirty-six foot rate. So, you're, you're in the middle of the road, but I absolutely disagree with allowing somebody to put a kayak in a seventeen-foot wide slip.
If they're paying the rent.
Yeah, I'd agree with him, if you're paying the boat.
That's, it's yours, yeah, your call.
Yeah, well.
Because I may not be able to afford it, I lost on the stock market.
This whole thing came up because a resident got over.
Exactly, got over.
Passed over, and we have a resident here.
If you look.
Yeah.
There are slips that are very narrow, and there are slips that are very wide. Okay, well, it makes no sense at all to rent a, a small, I'm sorry, a large, very wide slip to somebody with a very narrow boat. Now, if they were to do that, what would you do? You'd say, okay, well, you're charged the thirty feet, and you're also presented preventing someone else, who might want a bigger boat from getting in there. I, I think it's perfectly fair, if you look at the number of Cs, and the number of Bs, and the number of As, it's pretty well divided up, so you've got various, various sizes of boats that we can accommodate.
So, so you'd only be locked in, you have to call out, I want slip A, and there's a separate list for slip Bs, separate list for slip Cs.
I don't agree.
I don't agree either, yeah, I'm with you.
Are we going to tell people how many TVs they have to put in their house next?
Because what you're proposing is exactly what happened.
I would like to call any Marina around here and say, I want your biggest slip for my eighteen-foot boat.
And they'd say, your check good?
They're, what they're going to say is absolutely not.
I'd take that as a challenge, I'd probably.
I don't know, I think if that slip is open and they're looking for money, they'll take it.
Yeah.
They're not, I, I'm not saying we should reduce the price.
I mean, do you kick that person out if they lose the boat, if it's been surveyed?
Well, actually, if they lost their boat, they would have six months to put another one, same slip.
It creates the image that we're not making more slips available to, you know, because you have to explain, if there's a slip with a kayak tied up.
Yeah.
For six, for six months, and you're waiting to put your boat in, you walk up, and you don't really see a boat in that slip, it does create the appearance that the city's not servicing residents.
Well, you're, you're saying that's what you did, because you have six months to upgrade. I can put that little five-foot boat in there, as long as within six months, I buy the big monster. So, somebody's still going to come up to you and say, well, what's up? Well, show them the receipt.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to have some, yeah, there's going to be some disagreement here, obviously. Go look at.
So, I misunderstood, you're saying after the six months, I don't have to meet the requirement?
As long as I could, yeah, I could park that five-foot, I could park that kayak in there, because I got six months from that day I park it. I'm paying the full rent to pull in that massive boat. Now, what happens if it's a construction delay, that my brand-new teakwood is not available? So, I still got another six months?
Oh, okay, so, let's.
Oh, yeah, we're getting into the weeds, bud.
Let's go along with what you're saying for the moment, all right? If you look at the next page, you're going to see that there's proposed rates that vary to based upon with, again, width and slip, so they're not all the same.
Right.
All right, so, Kyle, help me out here, because I'm struggling to see this.
Okay.
It's nine dollars for a slip, a C-type.
Yes, the smallest slips are nine dollars for a resident. And these are just the numbers I plugged in to get us roughly to the same slip revenue.
Okay.
You know, just playing around with some numbers. But, so I just, I separated them out by the class, class A is the largest, it's eleven dollars a foot for the resident, class Bs the medium, ten dollars for class Cs, nine. And then there's a non-resident fee, that, again, is just kind of a, a number that's going to be roughly, you know, that could change, but I just picked something, so we can see how the numbers work. I put it at the top, where it says current revenue, that is with our twenty, twenty-three adjusted fees, that is our, well, technically, we just lost a boat on slip sixteen, which makes it an available slip, which is ironically the largest slip we have, so I think we need to make a careful decision on how we open the slip up. But I plugged the numbers in based on what we had previous to this boat leaving the slip sixteen. So, just to kind of show some things, the idea is, if you don't have a boat, but you're holding a slip, that's what that no boat number is. I just wanted to show what the numbers would be if there were no boats, when we were just going on with the, the rate. But that would be, but I think the actual most important, if you, if we were to use this fee structure for what is in there right now, we'd be making significantly more revenue, about ten thousand dollars a year, more yearly, but I think you need to take into account that the goal is, ultimately, we, we have all residents in those slips, so, at, at first, we might have higher revenue, but over time, we're going to see that revenue go down, because our goal is to have the Marina completely use by residents. So, then that last section there is the current boat lengths, using this fee structure, you know, and they're all residents. So, you do see that the revenue does go down, because you're not having any of those non-resident fees. So, it's kind of keeping it in the ballpark. I thought, you know, what's that, six, seven million dollars difference, thought that was close enough, playing with the numbers, but that's just what I laid out.
So, what are we doing about the initial problem? What about that list? And making it fair to all citizens?
So, the current list, it was, it was the largest slip, I, I started at what our current policy was.
Right.
We got down, it went down five, weightless enrollees, and, I don't know if I can remember the word, wait, registered, and it ended up getting to the fifth person that was down there for a thirty-two-foot length boat, but currently has a twenty-eight-foot length. So, I put it on hold based on the fact that they're willing to pay the, the thirty-two-foot length fee for that slip, for six months, but they only plan on putting a twenty-eight-foot boat in there, so that kind of comes down to the decision of how we want to do this. And being that it's our largest slip, I just stopped right there, because I thought, once we got into twenty, you know, twenty-something footers, we're, we're looking at giving our largest slip to a smaller boat, so I kind of wanted some direction on where we're going.
That brings, that, that tells me, it's like, what did you tell the other four people that were in that list ahead of them?
They passed it out.
So, they, they were informed, you have the ability, you can do it, okay. So, long as they're totally informed of that.
Yes.
I have a couple questions. If I'm looking at the new rates versus the current mix, we only have one person paying nine dollars a foot, why would we drop the rates for everyone else? Everyone else is, then it goes to ten.
Three, four. Because, again, we're just trying to structure out the fees differently, but not focus on each individual's change.
And this is just a, this is just a proposed rate. Kyle's plugged in some numbers, just so that we add some to the start.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm seeing, is then a basic minimum should be ten dollars a foot.
And paying ten to paying nine. So that would be my first comment. And then we're hung up on the length, but it's really the beam that's the issue. You could have a CB that's very narrow and long versus a.
Should it be cubic foot or square foot?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, it gets more, it's not as cut and dry as much of this paper comes out to be, you know, because there is that option of, you know, you've got a center consul fishing boat.
Cause you're mind square footage.
And you might fit into one of the more narrow slips.
But bump it out.
Yeah, but it, but it's long, the length is there. I don't know if there's some tie to this narrow maximum length that you guys.
Well, what we were doing was making pretty much a generalization that the big long boats. And so we were trying to fill it as much as we can. Trying to make sure whatever boat went into whatever slip, it was in the right direction of filling that slip.
Yeah, it's still just a management. It's a, it's a dock master.
Yeah, it really is.
And that's where the problem is.
Yeah, it's always easy to sell.
What I'm trying to do is take this decision away from people that are not professional dock masters. Because without some kind of clear definition, they can always be accused of playing favoritism.
Yeah, true.
And so that's, that's why if we have some sort of a policy in place. Phil Lusk is here. He always has something to say. Would you care to say anything about this topic?
Uh, I don't know if I do.
I didn't know. Well, I mean, one point, point of order. I think last means we don't allow a lot of input from the citizens during a working session?
As chair, I can ask anybody anything.
And he's pretty known.
Jacket. Oh, yeah, we know. Jacket. For others. I'm following.
He's been intimately involved with, with, at least following this.
Oh, I agree with you.
And making, making.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
Passing suggestions.
Okay.
I'd say that's, that's a fair, a fair way of saying that.
You've got to bring them up.
Food for thought.
You got to go.
If you don't mind, can you step up to the podium?
Can't force it. Throw it out there on the worst podium ever.
There you go, wow.
I wasn't really thinking of stepping up and talking. That was my first look at that guy's. Probably a little, what I wasn't expecting, I think my goal as a resident today would be, how do you simplify the city manager's job while satisfying the initial request, while giving yourself a backup for you're going to find at times, you've seen this once or twice in the last twenty-five years, you're going to need another list for outside of residents. So I find it interesting. I don't know, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with three lists, but does that make your, would that make your life easier, Kyle? And here's a thought before you answer that. If you look at Dunedin, for example, they have things embedded in a lot of ordinances around management of marinas. One of them is tied to the list. So if someone is in a slip, they get priority to go to a bigger slip size if they want to get a bigger boat, if that helps you at all. They actually took that into consideration. And hey, someone ten years has a twenty-eight footer, wants to go to a thirty-seven, they get to jump the list and not start over. So there's a lot, a lot of moving parts to this approach versus I'm going to go from linear to slip and just cut and dry. And that's the piece I, I actually respect Joey's comment, like, one, does it show when we put a kayak or any size boat in a beautiful-sized slip? I think that goes back to the original question. I've always had, what's the vision? My vision, Bella Beach, isn't a bunch of smaller boats and beautiful wasted commodities out there. It's a real, it's a really tough challenge. But I think the focus should go back to how do you satisfy the resident issue? Always have a backup for outside. And I think I'll leave it at that. You're going down the right path with the discussion. And I got to look at Kyle. I personally want Kyle's life to be made easier. How do I make it easier for him instead of this subjective approach? Oh, I got a big slip. I got to get the biggest boat. It's revenue. So it's, it's a pretty tough one. Would you have any questions while I'm standing here?
Well, my question would be, is we put out there, I got the biggest slip, but I don't have the biggest boat. Is that offensive to other boaters?
You know, it's, it's just, I don't know.
I've been waiting, wait a minute. Maybe I should say, I've been waiting seven years for a slip too. So.
Yeah, that goes back to another issue on how are you going to divvy up three different sizes for people that have been on this list once you've adjusted? That'll be interesting. To answer your question, you know, immediately what went through my mind was space management. And it just isn't efficient space management. I mean, if I'm running a warehouse, I don't want to put the copy paper in one of my places I could put the copiers. Know what I mean? So it just doesn't.
I understand.
Doesn't look right, but I guess you could satisfy my answers.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't be cutting the price, you know.
And that's your goal. I mean, that's.
Yeah, one thought, and I'm just kind of really thinking about this. This is a relatively complex issue. Some of us are boaters, some of us are not. Some of us are on the list, some are not. Would it be irresponsible just to say, look, with complex issues, we usually tend to form a committee or a, you know, a subset of us, is to form one just for the pure issue? To account of the rates, the waiting lists, and then have them come up with a series of recommendations that present to us versus us trying to, from whole cloth or experience, trying to rewrite what many marinas are actively doing? You know, we get served.
The survey size was done.
Yeah.
It's been done two or three times and we've never moved on. And that's, that's the problem is that no matter what, you can't satisfy every scenario. Someone's going to get their feelings hurt. Someone's going to feel like the city's turned their back on them. And, and, and there's going to be situations where you can't make people happy. So this was a good starting point to give us something to think about. And I know that we're not going to solve this in a day. It took me two months to even have the conversation with Kyle because I really didn't know what would be the best medicine for our community. And I certainly want our community to be first. And I want the residents to be taken care of. But I also understand that not every situation works out for everyone. And, and it's not by, that we're purposely leaving people out, but I just also believe that there's going to be situations where you may have to wait longer. Let's just reverse the situation, okay? You've got a big boat, all right, and there's a narrow slip. And just because it's a narrow slip, does that make it fair? If it's too narrow for that big boat to go in there, he's in the same situation. If you're setting, if you're setting certain standards for various sized slips, well, then now everyone truly is treated the same.
But see, if he has the opportunity, he has your boat, he can always buy another boat to fit in this, because he's next on the list. He has that opportunity to.
I'm saying if he has the big boat.
Yeah.
And, okay, what, there's really no difference. So physically, there is a difference. But what I'm saying is he's left out now too. Because the only thing that's available are smaller.
I'm saying he can still buy another boat if he'd like and place it in there. You can have two boats. Many people do. I mean, I'm just saying, going through the list, it's a secondary, tertiary effect.
It could, it could be the same scenario where the little, the guy with the little boat, if a big slip is available and he's on that list, well, he could buy a bigger boat too. So I would like you to take time and write us a policy.
Sure.
And you've got some ideas. I want you to take this list and this material if you have the time.
Now give it a shot, yeah.
And you give us something and, and work with Kyle.
No, I agree.
Kyle, if you don't mind. And then at the next work session, let's have this conversation again. And Phil, I would advise you to come here and, and hear it in person.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help. Council members able, there's a lot of information out there. It's interesting. Sometimes we think about, I think we could do better down there with turnover. If we do a little bit more on managing ordinances, maybe that we don't have enough or do. I think we have a lot of things around, you know, is your boat capable of moving? Is it aesthetically pleasing? Has it run? Is the slip empty for six months? There's a lot of things that other marinas do that create churn versus someone has retired and moved out of the city. And we don't always have to wait for churn to remove a list faster. There's a lot of things in other ordinances. I would encourage you to look at that as well. It's not a bad idea what you're doing with a designated different list. I think what's going through my mind is not the management of that. It's just the fact that there's a current list. So just for clarification, does that mean that however people are on that list, they immediately go into one of three buckets, right? Is that the vision?
I would think so.
Yeah, so maybe, you know, that just requires checking with people and communicating like you do every year. You're going and scrubbing that list, verifying, this is the way we're moving forward? Is this still your, your boat? Do you have one? You know, so there's nothing wrong.
Essentially, they could pick any bucket they want to be in.
Hey, you know, I, I had a vision years ago of, you know, making sure we had seventy grand. I'm very pleased to see we're really close to that. I mean, we were at fifty-six no more than two and a half years ago. So if we pushed the revenue up quickly, it would have kept going. So try to maintain that number with what you're doing. And I, Dave, I think, Mayor, excuse me, for saying that. I think your rates are right on target with what you did. Eleven, ten, nine might be low. I'll close out with this thought too. You have an opportunity with that slip open. You're also working with some contractors, you know, slip sixteen, I think it is. And that could be two slips, you know, so you could throw a, a little piece down the middle and get some twenty-six footers in there. So it always goes back to what's the big vision? Unfortunately, sometimes we start with a citizen comment. We create a tornado and here we go off to the races. So. Stick to the vision. Where do you really want to see ten years, fifteen years from now? I'll start with, I think we should make it easier on the city manager. Thank you for that opportunity, Mayor, for bringing me up.
You're welcome. And thank you for having Chris speak.
Same with that tornado. I applied for a C slip. I've been on the list for five years. I get a bigger boat. So I notify you, I need to now go to B or A. Do I go to the bottom of the list with B or A?
You'd have to. Because otherwise you play games.
But I think it's back to the comment Bill May that is, you know, do we ask everyone out? If you're, if you're already in the marina, you have an opportunity to upgrade to a larger slip. I thought that was pretty, that's a nice way of handling it. I mean, you've only, I mean, you've got eighteen slips. It's not that many people to reach out. You've got a slip open up. So now you're only seventeen people. You know, send a letter. We've got, you know, slip open now. If you have an interest in upgrading, let, you know, give them ten days to respond and then they can go down the policy. That's, I think that's a great way of handling that.
I don't know. We, we did not even, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
I was just going to ask a question about, I know we had some discussion about ultimately trying to get to the goal of having all the slips to residents. We just felt like that's the right thing to do.
We, we never even got to that part of the conversation.
Okay.
There was so much shock value to the introduction of the classifications. We didn't make that.
And where, where are we? Just an estimate number of how many residents versus non-residents appearing in the stuff? Just about.
You said only like two or three?
A little more than half. It's not. Go ahead, half of the ones.
But while you're looking at that, I did dream, what, you're saying that Phil said, about if you're already have a slip and you're in a B slip and an A slip becomes available, we have to have something in the ordinance to define how you're going to handle that. So now I've always wanted to get a bigger boat. So now I have that opportunity because an A slip is available, I'm going to sell my B boat. And if I'm next in line of occurrence to the owner to upgrade, I think that would be a cool offer to the people out there. You don't go to the bottom of the list. That would be cool.
Councilmember Zabel, what I would.
Don't run these notes. Go ahead.
What I would challenge you to do is start with, with what we give.
No, I'm going to start with the ABC. That's what I'm just kind of listening to.
Start with that and build on that.
Got it.
And, and rather than tearing it apart, I would say enhancing it.
No, I will.
And.
That's what I was listening to, conversation about the movements back.
Has some great ideas that we discussed about
What else?
What to do with non-residents and people that have rental properties, but they don't live here.
Yeah.
How do you identify who is a full-time resident and how they should get preferential treatment? Just where you have all that information.
Yes, and the regulations of marinas are covered over city ordinance, over the actual agreements that they sign and the administrative policy for the waitlist. So it's kind of spread out, but all that information is important and that kind of governs the marina. And then I have a lot of information through discussions with Mr. Lusk of what other marinas do and a lot of considerations, ideas to, to look into.
And also, I know it's unfortunate what happened with the gentleman. He came here and spoke. But he's not the first person that's happened to. And I think about all the people that that's happened to before him. Right now, we have certain policies in place and it's kind of awkward that he had to step up and speak. But I think about the other people that probably feel cheated until we have a policy in place and we reboot this list. So I just kind of want to remind you of that.
Got it. Nope, we're definitely enhancing it and work with it.
As far as the opening right now, do you want to, we could reach out to the existing slip renters and see if anyone is interested in upgrading to the larger slip. The one thing is, you know, it's easy for somebody to use this as a light slip. Somebody's got a lift already. It's a much bigger deal.
I'm really struggling to hear you, you're not a person.
Sorry. So I was saying, we can, we can look into sort of a legacy policy where existing slip renters have an opportunity to upgrade to the size nineteen-foot beam slip sixteen. But again, that's, that's kind of a process. So if somebody was saying they have a list, a lift in their current slip, I guess we could see what interests we have out there, but we're going to have to define the criteria of how they move and how much time and what else is in process.
Temporary policy to migrate us to whatever new policy was.
Right.
Sure, because I don't want to see that as anything empty while you kind of figure it out.
Yeah, you got to.
The process either.
Are there vacant slips right now?
Yeah, the largest slip is vacant.
That's one of the hidden water boats you said.
That's what nineteen.
Excuse me, how do we prioritize? That's another question. The people who are interested in moving into slip sixteen, do we prioritize it by how long they've been in the marina or prioritize it by the size of the boat?
Are they in the, the A level boat size?
It depends.
Oh, they're all in the A level?
No, they're, they're spread. They're all different sized boats.
Yeah, because I'm thinking at least, you know, I'm writing. Yeah, because I'm thinking, at least, you know, I'm writing the policy as I go here. Using the ABC structure, then I would say that only those that are in the A can be approached for that.
No, because we're talking about existing tenants that may want to buy a bigger boat. And now that we have a slip that can accommodate.
Then perhaps put the word out? I don't know. It's, yeah, I'm just thinking on the run here.
Would you like a bigger boat?
Yeah.
I think we all would.
That's your biggest issue. Excuse me for jumping back in. I think what went through my mind was making the call to all the people that are on the list to make sure, is this your current boat? Is this what you're thinking? We're gonna make some changes. So, when they go into different categories, are they the right one?
Yeah, they know the numbers too.
And I think you're right. There's probably, I wouldn't even know how I go about that, but pick something and satisfy whatever you want to with the current slip runners. I just don't like the idea of there's a heavy slip. And that was one of our most beautiful goals though. And it should reporters have that, unless it's two slips in a year.
Okay, so...
Yeah, writing that down. You gotta get the...
You're gonna call out, you're gonna call some people in smaller slips, smaller boats and see if anyone's looking for an upgrade.
Right now, my mind says, the star of the person who's been there, give the opportunity to the person who's been there longest and then just go down to the newest person in there.
And then it would create a domino effect, which is okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Step 14 moves to 16 and then that's over now.
And so much for making your job easy.
I know. That's what I was sitting here thinking about. I'm like, right now, you've got a slip open and you've got someone that wants it. Really is what it comes down to, is what you've hanged to us with today. You have someone who has a 28 foot boat, but talking about getting a 32 foot boat and would like that slip.
He has 30, he put on the list for a 32 foot boat. He'll pay the 32 foot price until he gets 32 foot boat.
And then you're gonna repeat the process until basically, like you said, everybody's kind of fleeted up and then now you got true openings.
But again, this is somebody who doesn't have a boat, doesn't, or has a boat, but has not been on the list very long.
I would advise you to have something in place before you start screwing around with our current tenants.
Okay, we gotta hustle.
If there's someone in line that's eligible right now under the current policy, I would let them have it until we change our policy. And if the next person in line doesn't own a boat, the next one just likely done the task. So, you can find them. And then whenever the regular policy is finished, then we can address how to deal with everybody.
That way it's full.
Two questions. The next person in line is a resident. We got rid of all the non-residents on their waitlist, right?
Well, there's still non-residents here. We've gone as far as to mix them, but they prioritize always by residents. And we have established that they need to be residents, not just property owners.
Resident owners.
So, that is just...
And the gentleman that's leaving, or the boat that's leaving, it's had a resident or...
That was a resident.
Okay, they moved or...
I believe they got a bigger boat and they're two rated.
Seven, two, four.
God. Jeez. They're summarying in Khan.
Yeah, 19 feet.
What's yours, Joe?
It was a big boat.
Yours is only what, 30?
They had a 45 footer.
Yeah, so, and then the guy with the 30, that wants to get the 32, he's gonna have to invest in a lift, is that...
I don't know what his plans are, but he was willing to pay that six months' worth without the boat. And I was gonna make it clear that you must have the boat, no refunds. So, you gotta have like a deposit six months to get it in.
Yeah, there's a lot of hair on that. I mean, there's a lot to think about with regards to, I don't think we're at a solved time. There's, we need, you know, what is...
I'm already thinking deposits and pay.
Because we just gotta rework the agreement to facilitate that.
Right, and I don't want to micromanage it, but...
You can't halfway, you can't do piecework on the policy and constantly change it. We need to have a finish on before we change things, change the rules.
Do you have someone else in line that has a bigger boat? Because it's probably that with that slip that's an issue. It's not the length of the slip. You've got a 19 foot.
Yeah, it's cubic foot.
That's, yeah.
So, the biggest boat I have in hand right now is a 28 footer.
On the list?
Yeah, we've already...
Right, yeah, resident, good point.
So, we have a non-resident standing here.
Okay.
There's always a bigger boat, non-resident.
That in itself is your issue where, for the history of the marina, we didn't have a resident only. And we optimized non-resident revenue, boat sizes, et cetera.
Right.
You're gonna be dealing with 28 footers, 26 footers, 24 footers, 32 footers, of which we all can fit in the 28 footers slips.
But when we have the biggest one making slip, we might want to think about that.
Start thinking about building boat towers.
That might be two slips. If we really were looking at the picture of what we're doing, is our goal resident only forever? Which, it's, you know, the boat that's leaving was somewhat rare as far as a resident has a 45 footer that doesn't live on the boat. And those boats live on the boat.
All right, I'm gonna have to end the conversation. And the reason why is because you're on the local records and we came here to talk about it. I don't know what it's about. I'll have to get up and speak in front of... We're just gonna get you a lapel case.
Just give us a, yeah. Lapel mic. I think I got the stuff.
All right, so you okay with that?
Yeah, I think I got the list and how to work. No, I mean, policy writer is like, okay.
Okay, all right.
That's what we do.
Any other last real comments before we move on to item number...
Four.
Four.
What is the direction on this open slip?
On the open slip, I think right now, until the policy changes, you have to treat it the way we've always treated it.
Okay.
We're working, we're working.
All right, there's another option, which is if you don't do it until we change the policy. Because if you're going to, I think the council has already spoken that we don't want to let non-residents ahead of residents.
Do we have any maintenance we gotta do on that one?
And we don't really know what the situation is with how this is all gonna unfold and act in fact. Because there's no, as far as non-residents go, I'm not loyal to them as far as residents go. I am. And if we currently don't have a resident ready to jump into that slip, I don't want to commit five, 10 years of non-resident whenever we're just right around the corner solving problems or...
Yeah, or maybe time to do maintenance on that one slip.
We were to get... You know, we're looking at the ballpark, at average, about $300 a month we'd be losing. That's not a huge amount of money to leave a slip open and get a policy worked out. For facets, they're definitely a height in management of the city.
I'd like to challenge this council to, in two to three months, we wrap this up.
We could do it.
And I would just would say, when we're looking at the beam, there should be a premium based on the beaminess of that slip.
So, some really looking at square foot, you know, size.
I mean, because, yeah. Because this is a valuable slip. I mean, I need to put it that way, but it is. And I don't know if you can make it, I don't think it's big enough that you can make it two.
19 feet.
With lifts? Well, yeah.
Six inches.
Eight and a half. So, that's what Bill had suggested a couple times. So, it's split in half, basically, 9 and 1/2 feet. It's nine and a half. We got a 9/8.
You got a lift, yeah.
You're gonna have collision.
Lift and navigation. Lift, navigation, fenders. Yeah, fenders, right.
Are we 100% committed, the way that we're committing is on the marina, or is that what we're stuck with?
No, no, it can be redesigned. I mean, even had that planned, they did additional catwalk. It's not a lot.
Because that, I think, Bill may be onto something. Maybe we should take a deeper dive into is that maybe you resize the adjacent slip.
Optimize.
A little bit. And then that way, you could open up and have two accommodating slips. Actually, you generate more revenue. I had two boats in there, one large boat. And you would also fit in that area that's a sweet spot for Bel Air Beach residents, which is about a 24, 28 boat in there. So, just some things to consider for sure.
No, my mind's going with that. Who'd have called for that one?
Yes, it's awesome.
No, optimization.
Then you start moving forward, moving to this. Yeah, we want to take on all of that responsibility unless you have those last whatever four slips all open up at once.
Well, it's like a business plan. You just propose financially, like we're doing now, what would take to get to from A to B, and is it financially worth it at that point?
It's already go back to living after the floating dogs or something. And, you know, having that whole plan where you have a catwalk that runs out and you have another...
Well, we got two islands out here we could use.
Yeah, and then we use up that extra space for that catwalk or something.
So, Kyle, real quick on your list there. So, we did split that 19 foot width into a 9/6 and a 9/6, which would be right next to a 9/8. How many boats do we have on the list now that are residents that would fit in there? That are looking for a slip? That would be that C here. And we already have a slip length of 9 feet, 8 inches. Splitting it in half and making it 9/6, 2 inches is a big...
You have a foot clearance on each side is what we currently say. So, if you got nine and a half, you got five boats at the bottom of the list that could fit.
That would be any better residents.
Better, safer residents, yes.
Better residents. We could build it bang bang.
Well, it all depends on how they're...
Can figure.
How they're secured in their boat. And I mean, there's a lot of things in that.
Spare drive or...
I see it at Yocla. We've got some slips where it's literally happening between the boats. But whenever they're not secured perfectly, things aren't exactly the same. They do hit each other and it's a bit difficult. So, there's always that little bit of liability to consider.
But 296 this would generate more money than what you just had with the 119 this.
Have we discussed this too much?
Horse has been beat, but I got my action items. I'll work with this and get something fast.
There's so many options. And now we're talking about almost redesign. It kind of all comes down to like, what is the vision? Wherever it's in there, it's still gotta be announced.
Exactly right.
Mine's a giant hook and stack of moles.
Immediately, we have a policy issue. And then if we want to later on discuss doing some refurbishing of what we have, that's another conversation. Does the council agree?
Yeah, that's a strategic, why anything?
Resident, other than following the current policy. You can't just sit on that for...
Yeah, so I gotta get this policy out.
So, we have something sorted out.
I would say, don't wait for us to get something sorted out. We need to see the policy.
Just proceed like we never had this conversation. Where's my man in black name?
I can do that.
All right, we have ten minutes. Mr. Reefer, there are two items that you have placed on here. Which one would you like to wrap up for the panel?
Well...
Item four and item five.
I guess I can postpone item four because I'd like to get, Rainy and I were talking about consensus for making a bank change. And this came from a proposal from Valley Bank. Citizens Advisory Committee Chair, Ron Siganek, has been working with us with. And he has a lot of experience with this bank and the surrounding banks in the area. So, he felt like this is a very good choice. And the main reasons being that they're gonna offer us the target Fed funds minus 50 basis points interest, which is much better than we're getting now from our current bank, which is Truist. And they are also not charging us any bank service fees. Currently, we get charged over our accounts with Truist from 500 to close to $1,000. And their interest is very low. They do a 0.4% rate offset interest and then only give, they've only given us 0.5 rate on the balance, which is extremely low, especially given interest rates. They've never reached out to offer us anymore. I'm sure if we negotiate, they probably would do more. But at this point, I think we have a very good deal with Valley. They had a proposal. Heather and I met with Valley on May 5th and met the staff, felt very good about the bank. They told us they had, they're well-qualified with an average score of 76 for the, which is qualified public depository rating with the collateral management office with the state. So, they also offered that if anyone has direct questions about, that they can answer when we reach out and provide a contact.
A brief question about, right now, we're undergoing bank failures. Do they have a parent company? What's their track record? What's their assets under management? Because frankly, governments have gone under for just this reason. They look for a short-term interest gain or maybe a slightly favorable look for personal checkbooks. And it was the back office, their loans that the bank has that put them in default.
I have a data sheet. So...
Yeah, so that worries me about Nationwide. I've never heard of the bank, frankly, but Nationwide activities.
They're very, very well-heeled.
So, you work with them?
I think definitely, locally. And then Valley, they were just, there was, it looked like...
Who was it before Valley?
It was AmeriBank.
There's only, you know, E plus.
None. They're the best bank. I don't, you know, and full disclosure, I mean, I don't want to be accused of being involved.
No, just a general question.
My daughter works with them. She's giving no credit for any of this. They are, and this branch is great. I mean, I literally have the branch manager's cell phone on my phone. And anytime a money transfer, I call them. Anything I need, I just call them directly. It's a very well-run, very, feels like a community bank.
Okay.
Going to branch.
So, it's still under FDIC, et cetera?
Well, our rates are higher being a government institution than the FDIC. I don't have the exact numbers on that, though, but they're higher than the insurance on...
Any other cities using them or are we the only one?
Well, they have the government office. I mean, they have them. I mentioned that this Gary...
Bellar, Cynthia Bellar lost just recently.
Okay.
And that's Andy, Heather's accounting firm.
Okay.
I noticed it says the rate index will remain in effect until April 30th, 2023.
Whoops.
That doesn't give me a real warm feeling about their...
That's why I look at banks and failures.
Problem went up.
Possibly, yeah.
I think basically what they're saying, and I'll clarify this, is that they don't get adjusted with the federal funds rate.
Okay, I mean, their letter went out April 25th. I'm just curious, are we concerned about that?
Okay, clarification. And the intention is to put, again, put this in the next council meeting. And we'll work from there. And then it would be a transition process. Obviously, we'd be opening accounts and moving in strategically, you know, as we have to change our direct deposits for some of our incoming infrastructure funds and some of our... As, as we have to change our direct deposits for some of our incoming infrastructure funds and some of our payments, all that. And even our purchasing cards.
Is this what made the initial recommendation to do this?
It came up in our, in our overall CIP analysis of where we're standing, where our, where our money, like where our money being held and what the interest is, in discussions of like, talk about the bond issue, you know, calculating interest rates rising and comparing, you know, what interest we'll be paying versus how much we'll be making on our assets, so that it kind of came into discussion.
So it was the Citizens Advisory Committee that came up with this. And I can tell you, I'm involved in several nonprofit boards and everyone is moving their money to smaller localized banks because they're offering great beverage rates.
Deal with that.
Yeah.
Somebody else. So currently we have. We have Truist and then we'd be opening a capital with this and then the only, right now our capital, and I don't know why it's like this, our, our capital improvement fund is with Bank United. So we plan on keeping it there for now, but if things work well and transfer our operating accounts over to Valley, that would be the intention. Because it doesn't make sense to have all these separate banks.
Doesn't bank you now your mortgage though, is that?
No, that, that is true. So we'll have to keep an account open for that mortgage.
Whoever we have our mortgage.
Okay, we did the stress test.
Does this require a resolution?
I don't believe so. Randy would be.
I'm looking at your past documents. I haven't seen one adopted previously as to how it goes. If it comes before you at the next meeting and a resolution's required, it will be prepared. I have not prepared it today as of yet. Kyle and I were just discussing this earlier today and I had just received the documentation. But if it requires a resolution, trustably, a resolution will be before you for that purpose. And you can vote it up and down as you, as you deem necessary.
Do they have any time constraints preventing us from making it to you?
No.
If it's a resolution, you don't need any ads or anything like that. So it really just comes down to, and Kyle and I specifically spoke about timing this morning and when we discussed it, you know, just noted that given where we are in the month, meeting off-cycle, our next meeting is only two short weeks away. So that gives us, you know, that's, that's not a significant delay. There were no time pressures that you felt needed.
Just making sure we weren't missing any ring, window, lock.
I'm not aware of any.
No, and I did the clarification on the way and through our discussions and meetings, I did not feel any time constraints.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're not under the stress test, so that's good.
I even, I reached out to them and I communicated that I was taking into this work session. The cloud would be.
Guys, it's, either way, we'll, we'll vote and we'll get it approved and then we're good.
Mr. Mayor, since we still have thirty seconds left, I think.
Work fast.
We'd be discussing.
Yeah.
I guess I'm ready to. Which is pretty simple.
Yeah.
That's what Paige.
And it, it's a draft, so.
And they're not allowed to stress test failures.
Yeah, definitely. The idea of I invest, again, is the city manager goal to, to kind of come up with a policy for seeking out grant funding for like our capital projects or it could even pertain to our operating budget. But I just started with, you know, just defining what this admin policy, what it's for. And then kind of in the policies, procedures section, talked about sources of monetary grants, which was, we joined the, the FLC, Grant Assistance Program, it was about, I think it was like four or five months ago. So they provide email and their website assistance with everything. It's on a national scale of, of all the grant opportunities and funding as it comes through. And then I, in subsection B, I kind of brought up that every time that a, we're considering a project, that it would be the city manager's responsibility to, to look for alternate, alternate sources of funding. And, you know, I listed out grant programs that we've looked at in the past and that we've worked with, put in applications. I think with, with grant funding, sometimes it's tough for us to meet all the criteria, but it doesn't mean we should ever stop trying. Because it, it's my mindset is that keeping up relations with the grant coordinators and the regional directors of these grants and sometimes when they don't allocate all the funds, they do lower qualification and it does open up because they do want to distribute the money. So I kind of wrote, summarized that and I also covered the ongoing grants that, you know, they're not much, but we do them every year. And I think that if it's money, if it's a program that gives us money back, then we should always take it to you to do it. And it just kind of talks about who is assigned. So I'm hoping in the future that, you know, we just have a longer list of money that we're getting and who's responsible for getting that money.
These are the ones on, currently on your radar, correct?
Yes, and, and like I said with the, so we get, right now we have the Magic Safety Grant and then we have the Pales County Recycling Grant. And we always submit for that money. But like I said, right now I'm currently working with that Hurricane EM Hazard mitigation program. Hoping to have a little bit of luck because of the stormwater projects, we found that we couldn't get anywhere close to that VCR. But then the idea was with this underground project, trying to come up with enough creative benefit through as much residents that work from home and the money that they inject to their economy through their jobs. And I mean, anyway, we can try and meet a benefit ratio for the cost of the projects and try.
And that a legal safety program, do we just get that, that for Maggie?
Yeah, we, that, we brought it up in one of the meetings and I joined it and it's, it's a program that just kind of keeps, keeps the nerve to the ground. Like almost some grants that you never return, but you like all over the country. It's just, you know, it's just a good, it's a good consolidation of what's going on. Just to keep those ideas and opportunities going through your head.
That's a short swing and it gets to the point of my. Any comments or suggestions to the question?
Let's go.
Good job.
Like it and let's use it.
And like I said, this admin policy is something that we can, we can right enjoy and follow to any point.
Okay, Mr. Franklin, thank you so much for reminding me that we still had that one item left.
Thirty seconds.
I would have passed it on.
Knocked it out.
Yeah, you broke my rule at nine o'clock, so.
Pretty good.
We will not discuss anything business or unfinished business and I would like a motion to.
Motion. Second.